All right, call the meeting to order. Item one on the agenda is to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Second, move by Cindy, second by Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried, the agenda is approved. We will welcome Superintendent from Dubuque. Yes.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Dubuque is so excited to host you today. I hope you had a great evening and you have a great couple of days here in Dubuque. It's a beautiful river town. We were talking back here to say, you know, we oftentimes take that trip to Des Moines, and it's so exciting to know that you're coming to Dubuque and to see what our community is about and all the great things that we're doing for kids. And so I appreciate everything that you do as the board to really support our students of Iowa and more particularly in Dubuque. So, welcome. And if there's anything we can do throughout your stay here, please don't hesitate to reach out. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting us.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to a public comment. The state board's agenda is full and I will place a maximum of 30 minutes for public comment. I'll give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are a large number of speakers. At the end of your allotted time, I'll ask you to conclude and the board will move on to the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. A topic from public comment that does not relate to an agenda item today will not be addressed at today's meeting. Do we have public comments this morning?
If you want to address the board today, please use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on your phone.
Do we have public comment this morning?
Nobody online. No public comments online.
All right. There'll be online, nobody present. We will move on to the director's report. Director Snow.
Thank you, President Robbins, Vice President Axiotis, and as always, thanks to each member of the board for their service. To start off, I want to thank each of Iowa's educators, students, and families for a successful launch to another impactful school year. And I also want to again welcome our newest board member Beth Townsend, Director of Iowa Workforce Development, who I believe will be joining us shortly. And then I'd like to ask Michael to join us in welcoming his mother Jamie Lee. And Michael, would you please introduce your mom?
Yeah, my mom is over there. Her name is Jamie Lee. She is a middle school special ed teacher at Interstate 35. She's taught for seven years now, I believe. And before that, she said. So, thank you for bringing me here today and making this possible for me.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lee. And then, and then jumping into some updates, last week, the department released new spring student assessment results for students in grades three through 11. And Dr. Jay Pennington will be presenting those results in more detail during our meeting. But at a high level, the state level results from the Spring 24 ISAS show that in English Language Arts or ELA, the overall results indicate modest long-term progress with some grades showing significant gains. So, long-term results in ELA, long-term from 2019, show proficiency increases across grades four through eight with significant gains between seven and eight percentage points in grades six through eight. The results show modest long-term proficiency decreases in grade three, which of course informs the state's focus on evidence-based early literacy instruction as well as decreases in grades nine through 11 in the long term. In mathematics, the overall long-term results remain steady and do not show meaningful progress in most grade levels. Long-term results in mathematics show that proficiency increased across grades three, five through six, and grade eight with significant gains, a significant gain of five percentage points in grade three since 2019. The results also show modest proficiency decreases in grade four and 10 and a significant decrease of seven percentage points in grade nine, which of course informed Iowa's focus on Algebra I in grade nine in the new mathematics standards adopted by the board this spring and supported with professional learning over the summer. The data show significant proficiency gaps between overall student results and student groups. Students with disabilities and students who are English language learners experienced much lower proficiency rates than their classmates with average differences across grade levels of 45 and 53 percentage points in English Language Arts for those respective student groups. The average proficiency gap in mathematics for students with disabilities and students who are English language learners were 41 and 45 percentage points respectively. And again, Dr. Pennington will dive into those results more in more detail and show gains and areas of growth over time. And then additionally, we have some exciting news that Iowa's updated state plan for accountability and support under the federal ESSA, or Every Student Succeeds Act, has been approved by the U.S. Department of Education as submitted. That is publicly announced this morning. Unifying Iowa's school accountability systems. The approved plan was built through a robust consultation process, as you recall, that began back last December. The process included consultations with all superintendents at each of the nine regional superintendents and AEA meetings with nearly 400 curriculum and instructional leaders, members of the State Board of Education, executive leadership of major public education associations, and AEA executive leadership. It also included a statewide survey with over 1,400 respondents in which all proposed changes earned a majority of support. The new accountability system reflects high expectations for all students. It incentivizes evidence-based instructional practices and it prioritizes partnerships with schools most in need of support. The updates to the approved accountability system also provide for consistent, rigorous, reliable, and fair school ratings that are easily understood by families, by educators, by communities, and by taxpayers. The accountability system utilizes a streamlined set of core indicators, including proficiency results in ELA, math, and science, student academic growth, chronic absenteeism, graduation rates, and post-secondary readiness. And notably, it equally weights proficiency and growth. It includes science proficiency in addition to ELA and math. It includes English language learners two years after exiting in an innovative English language learner's growth indicator. It includes chronic absenteeism as defined by the U.S. Department of Education and adds an innovative attendance growth indicator, so the growth in attendance among students who were identified as chronically absent. It includes four-year and five-year graduation rates. And finally, it aligns the post-secondary readiness indicator to student outcomes and specifically the attainment of college credit, of work-based learning experiences, and of industry-recognized credentials. And now, the department is working to implement this unified accountability system, will reset designations for all schools later this fall. And again, Dr. Pennington will provide additional information on Iowa's work to implement this transparent, fair accountability system, to inform continuous improvement, and to celebrate school success. The next significant update we wanted to touch on was a new personalized reading tutor for Iowa schools. And building upon our earlier investment in summer reading grants that we've previously discussed, the department recently announced a $3 million investment to provide Iowa elementary schools with intelligent, personalized reading tutoring that accelerates student achievement and foundational reading skills. To further support summer and school reading and intervention programs, the department selected EPS Learning, or AMIRA, to provide this innovative literacy tutor at no cost to Iowa schools. It's grounded in the science of reading and the tutoring assistance called AMIRA uses voice recognition technology to deliver in-the-moment tutoring, including corrective feedback to support and to build essential reading skills. So, as students read aloud, a digital avatar named AMIRA listens, assesses, and intervenes when a student struggles. It's, this personalized reading tutor is being provided to all public and non-public elementary schools through the summer of 2025. And as of yesterday, about 109 school districts and schools have already signed up to participate. And to zoom up, this work, of course, builds on our comprehensive advancements in early literacy that span our world-class state content standards adopted by the board, statewide educator professional learning through letters, evidence-based summer reading programs, and then personalized reading plans for students who are in need of support. Please, yeah.
Is that like an online software, like they just log into it or something like that, like on a tablet or a computer?
Yes, and it's facilitated by the classroom teacher.
Is that something that would be available? Because I know we've talked to, maybe you're going to get to this, about after-school programs or summer programs that students go to and how maybe those individuals aren't, you know, like reading teachers and how they can help students maybe not suffer that reading loss over the summer. So, is there a way to, that they can facilitate this or train on it or something?
Absolutely. And thank you for that important clarification. This actually started to support summer reading programs and specifically those summer reading programs that receive department grants. And then we've expanded it in the school year to all schools and school districts. But it can also be utilized in partnership with the school and classroom teacher to support continued learning and out-of-school programs before or after-school programs. And then again, will be implemented hopefully in the vast majority of summer reading programs in 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions on that? And this is a longer update, so please feel free to jump in. A lot's happened. So, the, the next component is around disaster recovery. And last week, we were honored to join Rock Valley Community Schools Superintendent Matt Van Borst and Rock Valley Christian School Principal Marcus DeJager, as well as educators and community members who, as you know, have worked tirelessly over the past two months to restore the learning environment and prepare to welcome school students back to school last week. As you'll recall, Rock Valley and Spencer Schools sustained extensive damage to their school buildings, which included lost curriculum and instructional materials, electronic learning devices, school buses and vans, CTE program equipment, and educational enrichment spaces and materials that ranged from playgrounds to gyms to libraries to band rooms. And seeing what they have achieved together over the past two months since we first visited immediately following the flood damage is truly incredible. Most recently, the department has supported Iowa schools and disaster-impacted communities with nearly $300,000 in emergency grants to support students experiencing homelessness as a result of this summer's weather-related disasters. The department also supported the purchase of instructional materials and facilitated return-to-school professional learning in disaster-impacted education communities in partnership with the U.S. Department of Education. And again, we want to thank every member of disaster-impacted school communities for their incredible leadership and their dedication to restoring the learning environment and to supporting one another. And then I'll also shift back. We'd like to welcome our newest addition, Director Beth Townsend, the Director of Iowa Workforce Development. And Director Townsend joins the board through Senate File 2385, which went into effect July 1st, which adds the Director of Iowa Workforce Development to the state board as a non-voting member. Director Townsend has led IWD since 2015 and previously served as the Director of the Iowa Civil Rights Commission. She served at the U.S. Air Force and Air Force Reserve for over 20 years as a lieutenant colonel and is passionate, as are we, about recruiting veterans to the state of Iowa and the state of Iowa jobs. So, please join me in welcoming Beth.
Thank you, Director.
Welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. To continue with our department update, we also want to touch base on the Division of Higher Education and specifically on update to FAFSA completion rates. So, 52.3% of Iowa high school seniors this spring completed the FAFSA, which was down only 2.2 percentage points from prior years. If, this is in comparison to some states with FAFSA completion rates down more than 10%. The national FAFSA completion is down nearly three times more than the decrease in Iowa, and Iowa now exceeds the national average in FAFSA completion. And that is because of the hard work of high school counselors, of our institutional financial aid teams, of our college access networks, and through the support of the department's Iowa College Aid Team. Iowa's post-secondary access professionals supported students and families every step of the way, and they will continue to do so during this forthcoming application cycle. Department staff provided all high school FAFSA completion reports and conducted record processing of FAFSA data for state aid programs. They also partnered with local college access networks. There's LCANS who are working with community partners to support FAFSA completion. And as a reminder, last month, the department awarded about $370,000 to nine LCANS to support the 24-25 school year. And then department-supported summer transition counselors, which we talked about a couple board meetings ago, including bilingual counselors supported students throughout the summer with FAFSA completion. And between May and now, Iowa College Aid processed over 36,000 newly submitted FAFSA applications. So, again, we want to thank our institutional financial aid teams, Iowa's college access networks, our high school counselors, and the ICA team, Iowa College Aid Team here at the Department of Education for their work to help ensure post-secondary access through supporting families and students through the challenges experienced in last year's FAFSA application cycle. Briefly, we also want to share that with the Board of Regents' Support. The department has joined SHIO, which is the State Higher Education Executive Officers' Association, to help represent all of Iowa's impactful post-secondary options. And then finally, want to again announce that last week, Governor Reynolds announced 11 charter schools will receive grant funding through the Iowa Charter Startup and Expansion Grant Program totaling nearly 4 million. All charter schools that are authorized by the State Board of Education were eligible to apply for startup and expansion grant funds. And as a reminder, charter schools intending to open after August 24 were eligible to apply for up to $500,000 in startup funds. And all charters that were open before August of '24 were eligible to provide, or eligible to apply for up to $200,000 expansion grants. And then just a couple of outreach components we wanted to make sure to elevate in the board meeting. Were first the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program and second, the License Plate Design Challenge. So, beginning with the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program, we are accepting nominations through the end of the month, through September 30th, for this prestigious U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. It's a nationwide program that honors some of our most distinguished high school graduating seniors for their hard work, academic achievement, and commitment to service and leadership and general scholarship and in career and technical education. And anyone, teachers, family members, community members, any member of the Iowa public can nominate an outstanding high school senior for consideration. And thank you, President Robbins and Board Member Kane, for serving on the review team for the general component. The Iowa ACT Executive Board will once again review nominations for the CTE component. And again, would just want to invite all Iowans to help recognize our high school seniors. The nomination materials are available on the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program page on the Iowa Department of Education website. And then shifting to the License Plate Design Challenge, this week, the department launched a new statewide challenge, calling on K-12 art students to help design the state's specialized education license plate, which I hope many of you have seen and likely have on your vehicles. The winning design will replace the current education license plate and will be featured on vehicles of drivers supporting Iowa education across the state. The contest is open now, and our creative student submissions are due to art teachers by December 1st. And thank you to the Department of Transportation for their partnership on this exciting statewide opportunity. And then finally, just to summarize some recent engagement, we all enjoyed another amazing Iowa State Fair highlights. For us, the department included the FFA Parade of Champions and STEM Day at the fair. In addition to the amazing activities that span building towers, virtual reality, programming robots, Governor Reynolds announced Google's $100,000 gift to support Iowa STEM programs with Dan Harbicki. And the NASA Iowa Space Grant Consortium, Iowa 4-H Youth Development, and Make to Innovate Lab launched a high-altitude balloon from the Grand Concourse, which was amazing to see. So, thank you to the Iowa Governor/STEM Advisory Council team and for our many community and industry partners for making this another great Iowa State Fair and STEM Day at the fair. We recently also joined Sioux City Superintendent Rod Earlywine, Principal Eric Kilburn, and dedicated CTE educators at the Sioux City Career Academy, Harry Hopkins Campus. So, we met with students and their construction and building pathway that provides hands-on experiences and connections with business and industry. And students are earning industry-recognized credentials and college credit while building homes to support community members in partnership with Habitat for Humanity for Iowa. And then we also met high school students in the education pathway program and heard how their coursework combined with their internships have prepared them as future teachers. And then finally, we continue to travel to all AEA and superintendents meetings, again, this fall and winter. We joined the Northwest AEA and superintendents meeting in Lamar's last week. We continue to meet with all community college presidents and the heads of IASB, ISEA, SAI, and the AEA Association monthly and continue to meet with AEA chiefs weekly. And then as a reminder, the ICA Iowa College Aid Board meeting occurred last Friday, and the Board of Educational Examiners meeting will occur tomorrow. That concludes my robust report and happy to answer any questions there may be.
So, I just have one question. Are the underlying issues on the FAFSA, are those addressed or is that still an ongoing work in process?
So, so the main drivers of the issues experienced by students and families were the federal delays in the availability of the FAFSA application. The U.S. Department of Education has again announced that there will be likely delays. So, we continue to work with our critical partners across college access networks, across our Iowa high school counselors, and our institutional financial aid programs to make sure that we continue to come alongside and around students and families for a successful application cycle this coming year.
Is there a timeline out there where maybe we get back to where there are these delays?
That would be a question for the U.S. Department of Education, but, but we hope to ensure expected, expectable, and regular processes moving forward.
Any other questions?
I have a comment and then a, then a question. The comment is that, excuse me, kudos to the department for helping those schools in need with the flooding and everything else. It's, it's nice that the department steps forward and plays a key role in that. And then the question I have is with the AA services, any initial feedback on how that's going as the year starts?
I think we continue to work closely with AEA chiefs and with superintendents. We have those weekly, weekly meetings with AEA chiefs to, to work through any questions or, or needs they may have.
And how's it going? What's, what's the feedback then?
The work is very much underway.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the meeting minutes from August 1st. We have a state board recommendation to adopt a final decision. We're on an appeal, and we have Rules Chapters 12, 21, 41, 43, 44, and 98 to adopt as presented.
I move, we approve of and accept the consent agenda as presented.
Then moved by Brian, second by Brooke, to adopt as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. All right, rules for Chapter 19 and 68.
So, I'm presenting with Dr. Elder, the department's chief operating officer. Quick elevator speech and then turn it over to you for questions. This rulemaking has no changes from adopted and by, from the notice of intended action. There were no public comments, but we do want to surface a couple of issues for you in your role as charter school authorizer. And the key portion of this rules package that affects you is something that you provided be back to the department about, and that is a sample or suggested application and a sample or suggested contract. There was no reference to sample contracts in the prior rules. The feedback from the board and folks of the department is that would be helpful both to the board, doing its work as authorizer and approver, and to charter school applicants trying to come on board and navigate the process and understand what are the need-to-dos, what are the nice-to-do's. So, that is a specific addition prompted by your feedback. Other additions or removals, there were some removals of unnecessary language, things that are self-executing like federal support to charter schools. Nothing the state can say would change that. That is all governed by federal regulations, so it's not necessary to duplicate. And then, an update after the past legislative session, allowing students who are in virtual charter schools to participate in certain or a limited number of extracurricular activities in their resident district. So, I don't have to drive to the school district where the virtual charter has its main office to do speech and debate or to do cross-country. I can do those, I can do up to two activities in my resident district. With that, that's the up-to-now, and Dr. Elder and I will answer any questions that you have or give you some insight about how we see the application process and the sample contract.
So, Thomas, if they're able to participate up to two activities, does the school district charge a fee for them to participate?
$250 per activity.
Okay.
And it's a, it's similar to virtual, to, it's similar to open enrollment into virtual high schools, such as the one in Cammer Clayton Ridge.
Okay.
So, it's a similar logic set and similar funding mechanism.
Other questions for Thomas and Deborah? So, the rules that are proposed are identical to the rules that were noticed to the public?
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we rescind and replace Chapter 19 and rescind Chapter 68 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Brian, second by Mary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. All right. Thank you. Item five, review of department priorities, progress alignment with board strategic goals.
Thank you. And Deborah is just pulling up the slide deck. But, but to kick off, we wanted to talk through our department priorities for Iowa's state education system in which all of our work is grounded. We've established and we've been advancing these priorities for about a year, and we've made incredible progress that we'll, we'll update you on together. Informed by, these priorities are of course informed by your feedback as board members as well as the feedback of superintendents, community college presidents, AEA's, our associations, ISEA, IASB, and SAI, and the Department of Education experts across the organization. and the Department of Education experts across the organization. So to kick off, we'll move to the next slide. We've got our, one more slide. Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll, we'll kick off with our mission, which is identical to the Board of Education's mission to ensure all students experience a world-class education as well as our vision for providing a foundation of an excellent education system that empowers all students to achieve their full potential. You'll also see safe, orderly, and welcoming learning environments. The board's goal three as a foundation for all of our work as a prerequisite for building a strong teacher pipeline for evidence-based early literacy instruction for narrowing and closing achievement gaps and for multiple pathways to post-secondary success. Again, board goal three is very similar to that first pillar around teacher pipeline to support a strong teacher pipeline through both recruitment and retention efforts. You of course know that early literacy is a top priority because we know unlocking a child's potential begins with reading. So strengthening early literacy and evidence-based reading instruction is a top department in, in Iowa system priority. And narrowing and closing achievement gaps through accountability and support. And we've had a rich discussion about achievement gaps experienced by students with disabilities and students who are English language learners in particular and our statewide efforts to support educators and families in narrowing and closing those achievement gaps. So both early literacy and narrowing gaps look very similar to the goal and objectives of board goal two. And then finally, multiple pathways to post-secondary success. Empowering students with those pathways is very similar to board goal four. Any questions on that crosswalk? All right. Then we'll dive into each of those four priorities. And this presentation is actually a presentation that we gave and has been somewhat updated. But a presentation that we gave to education committees in the General Assembly as well as to the School Administrators of Iowa Conference and then that we continue to cover across our regional superintendents and AEA meetings. So digging into supporting a strong teacher pipeline through recruitment and retention. Of course, a critical step in this was Governor Reynolds' leadership to provide historic teacher pay raises to both new and experienced teachers, which will shift to $50,000 for new teachers and $62,000 for experienced teachers next year. And then, and thank you to, to the education and administration teams and, and school districts for their work to implement the increases of $47,560,000 quickly over the summer. The, the second component is to continue to expand the impact of Governor Reynolds' teacher and para-registered apprenticeship program. And we've talked much about this program and the 726 future teachers and paraeducators who are expanding their impact on their school communities through this program. And, and I know many of you have had the opportunity to meet current high school students in the paraeducator pathway or paraeducators, many, many of whom are in special education teacher pathways. So look forward to continuing to expand that program's impact as well as the impact of licensed reciprocity and multiple pathways to teacher licensure that have been enacted by the General Assembly and implemented by the Board of Educational Examiners over the past handful of years. And then next, we are also investing in a teacher incentive grant that we hope to share more details about soon to ensure that we're recognizing the impact of educators on student learning and specifically on student growth. And then we are working to celebrate more teachers through the Regional Teachers of the Year modification to the existing Teacher of the Year program. As you know, and as you've met, Anne Minx is our current Teacher of the Year. She is an EL educator from Hoover High School and Des Moines Public Schools and she will be with us tomorrow. And then also, we have invited the Milken Educator Award Program back to Iowa and had the opportunity to, to celebrate Grant Hegstadt as CTE teacher in MOC Floyd Valley. And then we also have the department's headline stories and profiles in excellence to continue to celebrate innovative and excellent educators and best practices across the state of Iowa. And then finally, informed by feedback of education leaders, we have restored Teach Iowa in, in coordination with the General Assembly and at the direction of Governor Reynolds, and that is being rolled out currently.
Can I just add?
Please.
I want to acknowledge the work that Iowa Workforce Development did. We did not advocate for the transition from Teach Iowa to IWD last year, but nonetheless took under, took it under and did the best that we could. And our, and I want to acknowledge that my staff worked hundreds and thousands of hours to try to get that up and working the way that schools wanted it to work. Unfortunately, we don't have, we didn't have the capacity. So we were very happy to see it restored to the department.
Thank you, Director Townsend, and thank you for your team's responsiveness and hard work. Then, any, any other questions or comments? We're going to shift into strengthening early literacy through evidence-based reading instruction. And the first component of that has been providing evidence-based professional learning to up to 6,600 educators. That's an over $9 million investment. And the registration for our fourth cohort of letters professional learning closed just September 6th and starts on October 1st. And you'll see that the statements of impact from Superintendent of the Year Stacy Cole, from Davenport Superintendent TJ Schnecklopp, and thousands of other Iowa educators who have experienced the impact of letters professional learning on the effectiveness of the instruction they're, they're able to provide to all students. We're also working to support teacher preparation programs and aligning to evidence-based reading instruction through implementing legislation that incorporates the foundations of reading assessment and the accountability and transparency work of teacher preparation programs. And we're working to update the teacher preparation standards, which will ultimately come before the board for consideration and approval to include the components of the science of reading as articulated in Iowa Code now, including phonetic awareness, phonics, vocabulary fluency, and text comprehension, as well as clarifying language about practices that are misaligned to the science of reading. And then we are continuing to support school districts and schools and educators to empower families and teachers to best serve students together in partnership through personalized reading plans. At the Iowa Reading Research Center Science of Reading Summit back in July, we released and provided professional learning on model personalized reading plans to support school districts in, in meeting that their statutory requirement in providing personalized reading plans through sixth grade. We also are hard at work in implementing the new world-class ELA state standards adopted by this board. And again, have provided that professional learning to about 1,000, I believe, 300 educators across the state. And then we continue to support education leaders with information about high-quality instructional materials, the summer reading grants that we just talked about, as well as personalized tutoring through AMIRA. Let me pause there and see if there are any questions about these really comprehensive efforts to support all components of evidence-based reading instruction in the classroom.
Question.
Thanks.
So to the instructors or the classroom instructors in the science of reading, how many other instructors are left to be trained appropriately?
So, we, we are working to evaluate. In the intent of that 6,600 licenses was to ensure that the, the gap we projected was completely filled. So there are still some, not many, but some licenses available. And then we look forward to, to ensuring that not only that professional learning for in-service educators aligned to evidence is provided, but that we support teacher preparation programs and their alignment to the science of reading too and in pre-service. Yes, and I think it's most important to note that superintendent to superintendent, curriculum director to curriculum director communication for articulating the impact on effective instruction on student achievement and student growth. We talked to one of the early implementers of, of letters, a principal who brought the team in throughout the summer to do letters professional learning and asked, how, how'd you motivate your team to engage in this new professional learning in the summer? And she said, I just showed them the data and what our students' needs were and that it would have worked in other districts and across the nation and across the state. And that ability to impact student learning through, through evidence-based practices was all the motivation our educators need, of course.
Great. One more question. How are we preparing colleges and teacher prep programs to adopt this curriculum as well?
Can you bring your mic a little closer?
Yes. Yep. Do you want me to repeat the question? Yeah, I'm just asking about college prep programs.
And sorry, will you replay, repeat the question? How are we supporting? So that, that is significantly going to be done through the teacher preparation standards process. But also, we, we have some additional supports that we're looking to share with the board as they are more developed. Yes, thank you.
Not, excuse me, not a question, but a comment. Anytime a new program or initiative is implemented, there's some lag time before you start to see the results. We're not going to look for immediate results, you know, at the end of this year, but hopefully shortly thereafter, things will start picking up. So, thank you.
I do have one more comment. I think that some school districts across the state had already adopted an evidence-based reading program. Is, is that a true statement?
Yes, many school districts.
Okay.
Yes. So I think, again, that the intent of the support for high-quality instructional materials and evidence-based professional learning is to ensure equitable statewide access to, to those opportunities and learning. Okay. And shifting to empowering students with multiple pathways to post-secondary success. We, as explained briefly earlier, have updated the post-secondary readiness indicator that is a part of our school rating system and school accountability system to include work-based learning attainment and industry-recognized credential attainment. Work-based learning is, I'm going to skip down to, to access to impactful work-based learning, but that definition was recently updated in legislation to be defined as sustained project-based learning in partnership with an employer, simulated work experiences aligned to industry-recognized credentials, high-quality pre-apprenticeships, apprenticeships, and internships. So that's the definition that, that will of course be incorporated into our school accountability system. And it's important to note that that helps articulate important career exploration opportunities like job fairs, job shadows, and mentorship to, that, that are really targeted at middle school students and early high school students and distinguishes that from work-based learning, which is in partnership with an employer. And then we've also, as you know, launched the Credentials to Careers Grant Program, providing nearly $2 million to 20 school districts to align their existing CTE programs to the attainment of an industry-recognized credential. And we have a rubric articulating the key components of a high-quality industry-recognized credential. And the department's provided a list of high-quality industry-recognized credentials and continues to respond to superintendent and school district requests to, to look at additional industry-recognized credentials to determine their quality on that rubric. And then we also launched a specific version of the Credentials to Careers Grant, which is the Credentials to Childcare Careers Grant, which we partnered with five districts to implement five pilots to support CTE programs, namely family and consumer science CTE programs and aligning to the attainment of a child development associate or a CDA that the industry-recognized credential for, for the childcare workforce. And this has a number of important impacts. One, it provides high school students, again, the opportunity to earn an industry-recognized credential. It empowers communities to build a childcare workforce that is of and for their local communities. And it expands access to childcare opportunities, either in partnership with a community childcare center and, or directly in the school. And critically, it is leveraging partnerships between schools and communities.
Question on the industry-recognized credentials. How are those developed? Who, I guess, does that?
That how, how is the list developed or how are industry-recognized credentials developed?
Our industry-recognized credentials develop.
So, so they're generally independently assessed. That's a component of a high-quality industry-recognized credential. So they are provided by industry, independent evaluators that are informed by industry leaders to be responsive to the needs of the specific profession and are regularly evaluated and reevaluated to ensure alignment with the demands of industry.
So there's a database, so to speak, of industry-recognized credentials that you can pull from?
So we, Iowa has a list of industry-recognized credentials that, again, we, we've got a rubric of industry recognize, or to evaluate the quality of industry-recognized credentials. So are they independently provided? Are they regionally and nationally recognized? Are they stackable? Are they aligned to in-demand, high-wage or public good career fields? The, the, all components of the evaluation of quality. So we've got a, a list of pre-approved or pre-vetted industry-recognized credentials. And then as programs continue to align their coursework to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials, school districts and CTE programs ask us to evaluate additional ones to, to ensure that they are of quality. And then the very last component is empowering high school students to earn academic credit for CTE courses and specifically for, for ag, applied sciences, technology, engineering, and manufacturing courses. And, and that is a recent update from the past legislative session that we're supporting schools and implementing.
So could I ask a question in regards to that? Does that, I know right now it's the CTE courses. Will that, do we expect to extend to some of our, I'll call it after-school, but things like First Robotics or some of the other programs that are extracurricular but that are application and, and I would say showing competency of what they're learning in the classroom?
It, it's a great question and important consideration. I know many of those programs are critical parts of the CTE course, but the legislation enacted is specific to CTE courses.
Specific to them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on post-secondary pathways? Right. And then finally shifting to narrowing and closing achievement gaps through accountability and support. And there, there's going to be a lot of this agenda for today's board meeting, diving deeper into this. So briefly, we'll share that the department has supported education leaders with over 4,400 hours of school-based and school improvement supports, evidence-based professional learning. And as well as to, with access to information about high-quality instructional materials. The state board has led a comprehensive review and revision process for all state content standards at least every five years following 14, in some cases, years without substantive review or revision. The new math standards were adopted in the spring, ELA in the summer, intensive professional learning occurred for both of those sets of standards throughout the summer and into the beginning of the school year. I know we mentioned the number of ELA participants. Math standards have had nearly 2,000 educators participate in DE-provided professional learning since the board's adoption. And then we are beginning work to review the science standards starting in fall of 2024. The application to serve on that first review committee is currently out and closes soon. The application to serve on that first review committee is currently out and closes soon. And then we've talked a lot about unifying Iowa's school accountability systems. And then, as you know, we have provided grants specifically to remove barriers to school attendance for students experiencing homelessness that were focused on transportation, especially in rural communities as well as resource hubs, which are inclusive of clothing closets and food pantries, but also support purchases of items like a washer and dryer, a portable shower, whatever that basic need or need of a student to be able to access the educational program fully is, is what these resource hubs are intended to meet. And that concludes our update on.
Question?
Yes, please.
So with the standards being reviewed and revised, what implications as far as the Iowa assessments performance for kids? I mean, since we want to align our standards with our tests, what type of efforts are being, I guess, conducted to make sure that alignment is there?
Thank you, President Robbins. That's a great question. And Dr. Pennington will jump into this as well. But we are in conversation with the Iowa Testing Program, who we are looking through the modifications to the state standards and whether or not the modifications require additional testing items or the extent of updates to the ISAS that may be needed. But Jay, well, Jay, do you want to jump in as well?
Sure. You just had, so we've been working, relatively both internally. Have it, the Florida's, the standards to implement those. So the ELA teams and math teams were sort of meeting to assess what those really mean. We had meetings, several meetings with Iowa Testing Programs about each task, along with those teams. Iowa Testing also has what's called a technical advisory committee. That committee is made up of national experts that they are, that are external to this, to the test, that provide input about development. So substantive change, like new standards, later this fall, they will be meeting with that technical advisory committee to review standards, review the assessments, see what gaps exist, their personal mention. And then we'll come back to the department with a proposal around what the change, what those changes. Along, and with that, when, what's the timeline to implement, to change this? Because it will take time, particularly if there are missing items or missing content areas. So I'll field test those items, make sure those items are performing as expected before they're actually integrated.
So it's underway, we're on a five-year cycle for review, then the timeline for, if there's a review, I guess, a revision of the Iowa tests, that timeline has to be fairly short.
It does need to be, does need to be fairly short.
I'm sorry, if we want our online audience to hear Jay, he's going to have to come up to the table. Up from over there. Sorry, Jay.
No worries. So the timeline is sort of dependent on what the TAC or Technical Advisory Committee indicates. There aren't huge changes to what was approved. So we imagine that those will be tweaks. You know, gaps in the assessment in a particular area where a new item or set of items would need to be tested and then implemented. But I don't know how quickly, until they meet with that technical advisory committee and we have an actual timeline, can't really say how long it will be. But certainly we'll provide the board an update on, you know, what that looks like.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
All right.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on narrowing closing achievement gaps? Thank you. And that concludes our update on the department's top four priorities aligned to the State Board of Education's priorities.
All right. Thank you. Item six on the agenda is the Governor's School Safety Bureau overview.
Sir, we are trying to get him, while he's getting mic just to get one today.
Okay.
While we wait for that, I had a question. This, what you just presented is all great. I'm very supportive. But the next topic we're going to talk about feels like, does it need to be part of, like a fifth pillar here?
And.
You know, as we've discussed many times, it's hard to narrow achievement gaps when there's brain health, mental health, safety issues. And, and should we be, you know, we elevated that to our top goal. I, that's, it just, from an optics standpoint, feels like maybe that should be part of this. It fits to me, but I'm a layperson, so.
Thank you. And certainly ensuring that the board's top goal of safe, orderly, and welcoming learning environments is top priority for the department as well. It is visually depicted as the foundation, because, of course, it is our most foundational commitment to students, families, and teachers.
I see that.
But I'm excited for Mr. Anderson to jump in and to provide some detailed updates on the many efforts of the Governor's School Safety Bureau in partnership with the Department of Education to advance and ensure school safety.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Maybe from an optics standpoint, maybe to put the lettering in bold on the base so it's.
Yeah.
From an optics.
Thank you. That's good feedback.
Are we close for the Governor's School Safety Bureau overview?
We're still trying to get him in, sir. He is logging in, but we cannot see him in there. We are in contact.
Okay.
Days on that to jump in.
You know, we've, they have her.
At your discretion. Thanks.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, but if he's imminent.
Yeah.
Well, since we have a delay, let's take a quick 10-minute break and then come back with him. Okay? So it's 10:30 now. We'll reconvene at 10:40. Item seven on the, excuse me, item six on the agenda is the Governor's School Safety Overview, and we have somebody online with us.
Good morning, members of the board and Director Snow. I'm Special Agent Matt Anderson. I serve as the Bureau Chief of the Governor's School Safety Bureau. I do that in the capacity of Special Agent in Charge. The Governor's School Safety Bureau was established in June of '22 to ensure that we're being proactive in our efforts to enhance our school safety. The aspects that we primarily focused on with that are training, communication, and prevention. In our efforts to train our educators, administrators, and civilians, what we, what we did is we basically identified or focused on their ability to identify and respond to threats. We did that initially, and it still is an ongoing effort. You'll see on the slide there that three of the courses that we've identified as best practices are stopping the bleed, the craze, the civilian response to active shooter events, and then the civilian response to critical care. Those three different courses with the numbers behind them there, those are the amount of attendees that have participated in those classes. These classes just aren't, though, for school safety. They are actually for any type of emergency event. One of the examples that I can give you on that is the Greenfield tornado this spring. Two weeks prior to that happening, our training specialist had just taught the craze course at the Adair County Hospital. So we've got very much feedback because of that, because the people that attended that course basically said they couldn't believe how the training they received was just coming back to them. So what we've learned and what we know from law enforcement is that when you train to respond, you respond how you train. So we took that same training principle, and we're also applying it to our law enforcement and our first responders. The classes that they go through to have them better prepared to respond is the Alert Program. That's the Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training. Currently, 1,433 Iowa law enforcement officers have, have completed that training, and that is also ongoing. The other course that we have going, and it's a newer course, that's why the numbers are, are smaller there, but it's the Active Attack Incident Response. And what that is doing is that is integrating all aspects of our first responders. So our fire personnel, our dispatch centers, and our law enforcement coming together and doing coordinated courses together. We actually have, the week of October 14th, that entire week, we're going to get three different classes put on in different areas. So that is going to enhance our abilities to communicate effectively as first responders, which takes me right into our communication. We know that when we communicate effectively and quickly, it brings good response. So the best thing that we could do at that point, when the bureau was set up, was to make sure we integrated emergency radios into our schools. So the very first push that was put out, 1,253 radios, emergency radios, were installed in our schools. That came at a price tag of 4.5 million to get that done, but it is important. And what we saw is there was some schools that did not get in on that first round. So we're actually open to another 90-day ordering period right now. And the slide I know says 90, but in the last week, that's now at 101. So we've got until October 11th, when that closes for schools to order. And then also I wanted to note that the House File 2652 is actually mandating that these schools, public and private, be able to at least access a communication center through emergency coordination. So the second phase that we're working on right now with that is, 1.2 has been set aside to fund that and make sure that we provide that communication ability to all our schools. Inside of that, there was a second avenue of communication that we wanted to focus on, and that ultimately ended up becoming Safe and Sound Iowa. This is an anonymous reporting app. It's free. It is accessible every day of the week, 24/7, 365. You can, you can communicate directly with the dispatch center. And there's two ways to, or excuse me, three ways to do that. You can do it web-based. There is a mobile app that you can load as well. And then there is also the 800 tip line. All three of those locations will ultimately go to our dispatch center and provide that immediate communication base with anyone that is reporting a threat into the system. The reason that this is so important and why the initiative to get this accomplished was put into place is we know that in 80% of our mass shooting events, there was somebody that knew of the event. So if we can get to where these reports are coming in ahead of time, it actually gives us a chance to respond to them and prevent them from happening. The way this system works is the tipster, who is anonymous, makes contact with that dispatch center. That dispatch center is going to receive that tip, and they actually have three different means of communication. The schools themselves are able to set who the tip comes to. So they can set their superintendent, they can set their principal, they can set their school counselor. They, they can put as many contacts as they want in that for getting these referrals. But then also they get to tell us who they want it to go to as far as wise as they have an SRO or their local police officer, or even their county. They can establish who that communication line is going to be. So when that tip comes in, the dispatcher can read it over and communicate that directly to those different avenues of communication. The other, the third aspect of that as well is that it communicates directly with the Governor's School Safety Bureau. So that communication comes to myself, it comes to our intel analysts, and we are actively engaged in reviewing those as they come in. Some numbers for you. Last year's stats, 300 total tips came in to the system. Of those, you can see on the, on the graph on the right, assault and bodily injury, school safety, suicide, weapons, drugs, planned school attacks, and abuse. There are, they can also choose the other, which you see the second category is the other. But overall, it provides a way for people, whether they be students, administrators, citizens, anyone that's hearing stuff, to communicate directly with us. And that map there in the right-hand corner, that map is just kind of showing the age of usage for last year's stats. So it's not being fully used throughout the state yet, but we are also making sure that the information is getting out there so that, that there is getting more usage, and they know that there is a free source for them to access to do these reports. Some of the, some of the measures that we're also working on to do the prevention side of this is the School Safety and Infrastructure Task Force. That is currently ongoing right now. There's 11 different agencies that are part of that, 14 total members. But they are basically looking at different safety aspects that we can potentially recommend or address. And then what can also be done for our buildings to make them more secure for these, for these emergency incidents? The other avenue as well that we are working on actively right now is getting funding. We have applied for a grant or receiving funding for a potential statewide behavioral threat assessment team. Many times what we see is. assessment team. Many times what we see is, is these threats, if they are in the smaller districts, they don't have these teams available to them. They don't have the resources they need. So what we're wanting to do is get these teams into place so that we can fill those roles with these different districts, whether that be through assisting or even taking a primary role if needed. Also, inside those systems would be a way to model and train. So if those school districts chose, they could duplicate that same system for themselves. But overall, the entire point of those assessment teams is to get those case evaluations in and then provide an avenue to get the services to the student that they need so that we can get them reintegrated on a successful path back into our school systems for, for just the overall health of our societal system. We would like to do that before any type of judicial intervention. So that's what those assessment teams will help us do is, is get the help to them to get them on a pathway to success. The other avenue that we are actively working on is just getting the word out. Meetings with the SROs, the AEA's, schools, the, the calendar for doing presentations such as this, and just getting the information to them so that they are aware of the services available to them through the trainings and through the app and through this, the emergency radios, so they're using those services. That is the contact information for the Governor's School Safety Bureau. I'm up on top there, my training specialist and our administrative assistant. But overall, I'm gonna stop sharing this slide there for a minute. That is a brief overview of the Governor's School Safety Bureau. Are there questions from the members of the Board?
Questions for Matt?
Out of, out of all the schools that we have, do you have any idea what percentage are participating in these things versus not? Is everybody doing this?
The, the application has been provided to all the schools. So that map that I showed, that was about a thirty-two percent participation. So those were active usages of the app. But the schools have, have it. They are able to access it. So it's a matter of maybe, maybe there wasn't an incident in their school district, so a report didn't come in, or we just need to do a little bit better job of marketing it and make sure they're aware of how the services work, that they are promoting it within their schools.
I'll follow up that, Matt, as far as, you know, promoting usage of it. Is the, is the Bureau putting out, I guess, kid-friendly informational cards or packets or brochures, put in the hands of kids that they have these numbers and access to the apps and et cetera?
Yeah, there's, there's a number of different ways that we're, we're trying to make sure the information's out there. One of the biggest ways that we just finished up was the State Fair. T-shirts, tattoos, stickers, rack cards, you know, with the information and the QR codes to make it easy to download. But we are also sending these to the schools themselves, as far as wise as posters that they can put next to water fountains and the such throughout the schools, just so that they're aware. But what I have found is that the best, truly the best way to make sure that they understand is to get in front of them, get, get with them, sit down and then just explain the system. Because sometimes when you see it, you might be curious, but they don't actually, you know, go ahead and scan the code or jump on. But that are, those are the avenues that we are actively working on, yes.
I will say that I do know individual districts have also, instead of using this app, have secured other services for their school. So I know Cedar Rapids has, for example. I think Des Moines has. I don't know if Dubuque has or not, but just to let you know that that's.
Yes, we, there are, there are, throughout the state, different places, Eastern Iowa, Eastern Iowa, they have, they have been doing a very similar version of Safe and Sound. They, they had obtained the funding through their own efforts beforehand even. So they're still connected to that system. It's working very well for them. The, the difference is theirs isn't manned twenty-four seven. And so we've actually had communications with that to possibly assist in that through our Safe and Sound. And then over in Western Iowa, I know they had grant funding originally, and that grant's expiring. So just this June, I went ahead and met with the AEA over there at one of their conferences, just to let those schools know that we understand your funding for Stop It is coming to an end. And if these services are something that you would like to have for free, they're available to you.
I noticed on page seven, your slide from page seven, it talks about schoolmates, new maybe beforehand, or, you know, could be a source, or teachers, or staff. Is there any data on parents or family here? And are they involved in the, how does a family get this information from a school? Does the school just send it to the legal guardians or parents? Or how does that work?
The, the, the app itself is, is loadable by anyone. And so once they make that submission or that tip through the application, that's when it would reach our dispatch center and then be forwarded on to the school. But we do see a lot of submissions which say, my daughter came home today, and I saw this. One of the very useful parts of the app is that they can submit a photo or a video in it. So it actually gives us real-time evidence of what, you know, the parent is seeing. So it is, it is a, an application that is usable across the board. But being able to have those either screenshots, you know, of what is being said on social media, or the videos that they submit sometimes, is very helpful in us making sure that we're doing all we can to prevent that violence ahead of time.
So, so just to clarify, is there a, a specific target audience of parents, or is that the responsibility of the school to send the information out about these programs?
Um, there's not, I mean, our target audience is obviously the, the, the kids and the teachers, because they're the ones that hear it. They're the ones in the hallways. So that is the primary. But overall, I don't want to just singleize that as being the only, because, you know, you might be a guardian, or you might be a grandparent. And, and just knowing that you have an avenue to report your concern is so vitally important. So, so I, yes and no to answer your question. Yes, yes, we do absolutely need our schools promoting it amongst their school districts so that they are aware of it. But overall, anyone that has a concern, we will absolutely look at it and see what needs to be done with that when they submit it.
You know, I think this kind of gets into an area that maybe, I, I don't know what word to use, but I would hope that the academic space, the classroom itself, is reserved for learning, teaching and learning, as opposed to a student trying to record something or snap a picture of something that in their mind, they may be concerned about. And with the use of cell phones in our schools, I just want, again, to make sure that we always secure the academic space for learning, teaching, learning.
Yeah, I, I fully agree with that. And, and I can't give you the numbers right now. I'd have to pull them up. But this isn't, the application itself isn't something that's only available during this, during the school classroom time. We do see many of our reports come after four PM, even through the middle of the night. And so that's why the twenty-four seven dispatch center is so vitally important. Many times, first thing in the morning, when I get up, it's, it's a matter of looking through, like, are any of these, you know, immediate threats? Because they are coming after hours like that. So that is why, why that twenty-four seven is so important.
Matt, just to follow up on that, you know, the, it's staff twenty-four seven. If something comes in, I'm, that's, I guess, alarming or very concerning. What's the protocol as far as notifying who's ever in charge of that district so that they don't wait till the next morning to look at their emails or get their voicemails? What, what, I guess, protocols in place for things like this?
Well, the, the immediate protocol is the dispatch center, when they see that, they call me and wake me up. They have both my numbers. And so when that happens, I obviously got to get up to speed on it. But immediately at that point, because we have all of the Iowa law enforcement already in our database, that is our immediate contact with them. And then when it is an imminent concern, it is that local officer that already knows their principals. They already know their superintendents. I mean, they, they know, they know where they live. You know, we have had to knock on doors and wake them up to get them on board with us to help us at times. So that is the immediate protocol. We don't always need to wake up the administrators, because sometimes it is imperative that we find that person and locate that person. And until we do that, we don't have the threat mitigated. But if or when, we can wait till six, six-thirty, maybe closer to seven. What if we know that the threat is no longer a threat? We'll get them notified at that point so that the proper steps can be taken then.
Has there been any, I guess, significant issues as far as purposely false reporting at all?
Unfortunately, right now with social media, we are seeing, we are seeing a trend that way, that it's, it's almost like a challenge just to make, make it out there and see how far it spreads. And the other thing that we're seeing inside of those false, you know, false threats on social media is that there is no geographical region for those things. Just within the last week, there was one from Louisiana, state of Louisiana, but the school was named Iowa High School. That made it up to us. The week before that, there was a, an issue in Florida where the name of that town is also the same name of a town in South Carolina, also is the same name of a town in Iowa. And then it appears as though these are all based in these states. So that is one of the challenges that we are seeing, which is why it is so vitally important to have this coordination amongst our law enforcement partners to see what they're dealing with and as they're coming in, so that we can know whether or not, is this a real threat, or is this something that we can say, oh, you know what, this has originated down there and it's been taken care of?
Was that name of the town independence by chance?
It was not. It was not.
I heard that one on the radio this morning. Man, I don't, I'm not sure if this is in part of your responsibility or under your direction, but, you know, being proactive is obviously huge. And besides the reporting, is there anything else proactive that the Governor's Safety Bureau is doing? You know, the topic of mental health and everything else is out there. Is that under your purview? Is that under somebody else's responsibility?
No, that is, that is, that is assigned to us at this point, and that is very active right now. We're looking at funding sources. We're looking at other states that have been ahead of this. Obviously, Colorado started dealing with this two decades ago, you know? And so there's experience and value in there. I have been speaking with them on a fairly regular basis as what is the best assessment system, system, you know, to bring in place. There's, there's a variety across the board, but ultimately, what would be best served for Iowa? What is the, the model that we want to have to make sure that it's usable in our rural districts, but also in our suburban districts, right? And then also, for the school districts already have something in place, and maybe they like that, and they don't need that. So it's not like we're looking at making this a mandatory, you will use this system, but just to make sure there's something available for when they need those resources. So that is a very active, ongoing, right now in this moment for us.
And, and President Robbins, if I could just add, that's in addition to the statewide access to youth mental health, first aid training, statewide access to ACEs training, the supports provided by the Scanlon Center with, with the department's support, and then the therapeutic classrooms, which we just recently provided those incentive grants. And on additional components, we really wanted to ensure that the Board had a full picture of the all-of-government approach to ensuring safe school environments. It also includes the Department's School District Emergency Operations Plans, the Critical Incident Mapping Partnership with, with GeoCom funded through our, our PESR dollars, that, that provided Critical Incident Mapping of, of all school and school districts choosing to participate, as well as the Stronger Connections Grants, which are included both for behavioral and mental health, as well as physical school safety concerns. And then finally, the vulnerability assessments and School Safety Improvement Fund under the Governor's School Safety Bureau, to, to help ensure that, that all of the efforts to support schools and, and school leaders are represented.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Sometimes I'm asked, and I, and I don't have a good answer for this, other than what you can read on the internet, but, you know, metal detectors or presence of police vehicle, law enforcement vehicles, or actual law enforcement, is that, is there any data that would support that that's a deterrent or adds to safety that, of which you're aware?
There is, there is. It's like anything else with data. You know, you want to look at who's, who's producing it, and is there a, an agenda to what they're producing? So there is no doubt, there is no doubt in the, the incidents that we have been able to evaluate, that if a law enforcement vehicle is present, it will deter. They don't want to come into a conflict if they're bringing, you know, their plan of action against that school or against those students. So they definitely know that they will meet resistance. They're not looking forward to that. But the, the other thing you brought up is metal detectors, and that, that is something that's just very, I mean, that's a school issue. If you have the money to buy the machines, if you have the staffing to run those, and then to be able to get your students in and out of classes on a timely basis and everything, I mean, it's, you, you know, so that would, that's a very sensitive issue as far as wise as, how do you spend your dollars? And is this the best way to, you know, what do you, do the band kids take a separate entrance, you know, as far as wise as their instruments and everything else? So yeah, it's, that's a very challenging aspect. But there, there are arguments for both, both ways on that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you for all your work, I would like to say.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. While we let him go, I'd be interested in your take and how you perceive all of this in your school.
So we already have, we use what's called Vector, and it sounds super similar to the Safe and Sound, it's just free, all through the state. So we pay for that. So we've been using that. I don't believe we've had any, we had maybe one or two reports on it. As for metal detectors and police presence, we have, we have an SRO on, in building every day. We don't have metal detectors, though. We haven't really gotten to that point. We're all rural district. We're going to notice something. We haven't had many, we've had one or two incidents over the past, I'd say, five years that have caused some problems in our district, but we've handled them through administration and then.
Thank you.
Okay. Item seven on the agenda, the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress results, and every student succeed act changes. Jay?
Morning, everyone. Let me just share my slide quickly. Right. As always, appreciate your time. I'm going to start with the results of the, as Director Snow mentioned, we just recently released the statewide spring results. We're about three weeks into the school year. So I think it's a really good time to take a look at these data to see kind of what the latest trends are related to progress on the ISASP assessment. So I'm going to be covering English Language Arts, grade three through eleven, math, grade three, three, three through eleven, and specifically drilling into the achievement gap. So that pillar narrowing the achievement gaps, that's a state board priority, and certainly a priority of the department. I'm going to specifically focus on students with disabilities, English learners, free reduced price lunch, and then Black and/or African-American students, and Hispanic students and the achievement gaps there. Before I get into that, Before I get into that, I think it's helpful to just provide some context around the numbers and counts of kids that we're talking about in each of the student groups that I'm going to be talking about. So in fall, K through twelve, there were about four hundred and eighty thousand students in Iowa public schools. When we talk about the Hispanic student population, that represents about thirteen percent of all kids and is roughly thirty-five thousand students. For black or African American students, it's thirty-three thousand five hundred students. And then when you look at the other student groups, so students with disabilities, thirteen point six percent, about sixty-five thousand students, English learners has certainly decreased over time, but stands at about seven and a half percent, representing thirty-five thousand students. And then when we're talking about low SES or students eligible for free or reduced price lunch, it's just under forty-two percent and represents just under two hundred thousand kids in the state. So just wanted to provide some context about the student groups that we're actually talking about. By the way, please jump in and ask questions. I tend to move quickly. Yeah.
All right. And I should probably know this by now, but freedom reduced price lunch was, what's, I mean, what's the poverty level that that's at? How do you?
So, so that level is, it's been set at a, you know, standard level. So it's a hundred and eighty percent of the federal poverty level. And so that's for free lunch and reduced price lunch is a hundred and thirty percent of the federal poverty level. So Census Bureau sets the poverty level and then USDA sets the levels of what percentage of that poverty level does students, are students eligible for free or reduced lunch?
ESO is forty-two percent?
The overall percentage of kids that are eligible for either of those programs, yes.
Is that high, like nationally speaking, or is that, is that about average or is that low or?
It's in the middle. I mean, certainly there are states that have much higher levels of free or reduced price lunch. Iowa's average in that regard.
Jay, in that demographics chart, you have Hispanic at thirty-five thousand plus and black at thirty-three thousand plus. But down below, you have Hispanic at thirteen percent and African American at seven percent. I'm assuming that's a mistake.
Yeah, good, good point. That number is going to be higher for Hispanic students. So I would think that that would be almost double that, so close to the sixty-five thousand that you're seeing with students with disabilities. So good point. I'll double check those counts.
Thank you.
Thanks, because I said this, I was looking at the same number for students with disabilities. I was like, wow, that seems really high compared to those subgroups. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. Good catch. So jumping into English language arts results, this gives you a trend line, five different assessment administrations. Just a quick reminder, twenty nineteen is when we implemented the Iowa statewide assessment student progress. So that's sort of next generation of the Iowa tests. And the data prior to that are, so there are different kinds of tests. The standards were different. So we're specifically looking at that five-year trend. Additionally, you can see here that twenty twenty is missing and obviously that was due to COVID. So six years of data, five years of the assessment. There's really two ways to sort of look at these results. First is sort of the year-to-year comparison. So how are we doing compared to last year? And, and then there's the longer term. Over that five-year period, how are kids doing overall? Really kind of getting at the question of our students, how does student performance pre and post pandemic look for Iowa kids? And the bars represent for each grade level from three through eleven, the percent of students that are proficient at each level. So for example, in grade three, sixty-four percent of students were proficient in ELA in that year. So jumping into the year-to-year results, what we're seeing are more grade levels that are increasing year-to-year, those middle school grades, going into high school. We're seeing one grade decline. Unfortunately, that's grade three. In the most recent year, three grade levels had no change. And there were sizable increases in grades three and grades nine. You know, just one quick note about that grade three drop. Those students would have been in kindergarten in twenty twenty, so that disrupted year of learning, depending on how those students were learning, whether they were online or in person at least half the time. So just an interesting thing to sort of point out. When we're looking long-term, you can see that there is an overall increase in English language proficiency results. Again, we've got, you know, five grade levels are, are decreasing, or I should actually say increasing, four grade levels are decreasing and then sizable gains in grades six, seven, and eight, so those middle school grades. But this gives you a sense of, you know, in ELA proficiency has rebounded to pre, pre-pandemic levels and actually gone above pre-pandemic levels. So that's good news. The next set of slides are going to jump into the student group differences, starting with students with disabilities. And I'm basically, you know, really looking mostly at the long-term trend here, asking the question, how do achievement gaps look for different student groups pre and post pandemic? There's a lot of information on this chart, the top. So these are like dumbbell charts. The top represents the all-student achievement or proficiency level. So as I showed before, sixty-four percent of students were proficient. So we're comparing all students to performance of that student group. And so the bottom represents the percent of students that are proficient. So again, looking at the gap of proficiency. So twenty-four percent of students in third grade that are students with disabilities were proficient in ELA. That gap would be forty percentage points. And then you can see here what the numbers or percentage points are across all grade levels. There's a couple of things that I think are pretty notable. One is that there is an overall decrease in the gap between all students and students with disabilities over this long year, long period view. So that's certainly good news. And that another interesting thing is that the gaps tend to widen as students get into the later grades. So it's forty percentage points in grade three, widening to fifty percentage points in grade eleven. So certainly good news in that we're seeing a decrease in the gap pre and post pandemic. With that said, there's still very significant and notable achievement gaps between all kids and students with disabilities. Switching over to English learners, you can see the percentage points similarly to students with disabilities grows into the later level, or grade levels, so forty-one percentage points in grade three and fifty-seven percentage points in grade eleven. But unlike students with disability, you're actually seeing a sizable increase in the gap. So gaps for students that are English learners have, has actually increased compared to pre-pandemic levels. So they have not rebounded. Switching over to students eligible for free or reduced price lunch, you can see here the gap is about the same in grade three as it is in grade eleven. So it's not noticeably increasing across grade levels. And that there's also no change in the gap. So, so that, that can be seen both positively and negatively. So the positive is the gap is no worse than it was pre-pandemic level. So we've rebounded to, to pre-pandemic. And the, the challenge is, is that good enough? Looking at black or African American students, you know, thirty-nine percent of, of black students in grade three are proficient in ELA compared to sixty-four percent in grade three with a twenty-five percentage point gap that increases to thirty-three percentage points. So still an increase across the grade levels. The good news is, is that the gaps have decreased slightly between all students and black students, two percentage points between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-four. For Hispanic students, the gap's about the same across the grade levels. There was a one point, one percentage point increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. So it's very similar, but slightly larger, pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. Switching to math, when we're looking at the year-to-year, you can see that more grade levels are increasing in those middle school grades, six to nine, we're seeing higher levels of proficiency, three grade levels decreasing, two with no change, and typically the increase was one or two percentage points. So certainly trending in the, in the right direction, but not huge gains. When we're looking overall, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four, you do see an increase in the overall proficiency rates. More grade levels are increasing and decreasing, two grade levels with no change. There were sizable increases in proficiency in grade three math, which was different than what we saw in ELA, which is interesting. But then there were, there was also a sizable decrease in grade nine, seven percentage points over that long-term period.
Jay, are those, so third grade reading is down?
Correct, ELA, yep.
Math is up, but is that because it started, I mean, it's because it's up doesn't mean it's like good. I mean, did it start much comparatively? You know, the achievement levels, were they about the same and then one went up more? Or was it the math was lower and it went up, but it's still not where reading is? That I.
So math is.
Understand this dichotomy between those two.
It, it is counterintuitive and, you know, you would think, I mean, typically when you see a increase or decrease, they tend to be in the same direction, right? Like, so those that are high achieving in ELA tend to also do well in math. So we need to take a look at this more closely. ELA proficiency on the ISAS over time has been lower. Those percentage levels have been lower than they have been in, in math. It's difficult to sort of untangle this, but it is good to see that third grade is, like, it's not good that they're down in ELA, but it is good news that it's up in math.
I think again, just harking back to the, our, our opening comments, the decrease in proficiency over time for third grade ELA has informed our early literacy and reaffirmed our focus on early literacy. Same with the decrease in ninth grade math. So we're, we're focused on celebrating the bright spots and then using the data to, to continue to inform our priorities.
I, I appreciate that. I, I understand. I just, it just strikes me as very odd. That's all.
So do we have any understanding of why we see such a big drop off? I mean, it seems like they're doing really well and then all of a sudden it just goes, classes get harder or?
I, I mean, we have, and even on the old Iowa tests, when kids tend to transition, whether it's elementary to middle school, middle school to high school, you do see that drop off. The, the same sort of phenomenon happens as kids are, you know, that typically occurs through a, you know, within the same district and, but now attending a new school, but.
Make that ground up in other areas, like in eleventh and twelfth grade?
It does tend to go up, yes.
I don't see that in math, but maybe another area should.
Or do we have any correlation since this is the, right, the test results? Everybody gets tested, but how does that correlate to the classes they're taking? Right? A little bit. I think that, am I wrong with that kind of?
Well, that, no, that's a critical part as well. So as an example, there's been a trend in, and it depends on the school and, and the practices of that school, but a trend to have algebra for, algebra one in eighth grade is an example. And, you know, we would certainly support that, but certainly it matters in terms of what courses you're taking, the rigor of those courses, what kids are exposed to. In addition, these tests are general math tests. So we don't have an end-of-course assessment in algebra one like other states do, where you actually need to pass that test to move on to, to then, you know, geometry, et cetera. So these are general tests. And yes, the curriculum and the courses and the rigor of those courses matter, not only in terms of the result that you're seeing, but then also in terms of how that plays out in terms of success in college as well.
And then, and when we look back at the major revisions that were made to the state standards in math, some of the most substantive revisions are in grades nine through twelve. So dividing standards into courses for algebra one and geometry, algebra two, having standards beyond college and career readiness, conceptual categories and taxonomy retained, and then statistics and probability pre-calc and calc courses articulated. And then significantly, the math pathways document that was included in the standards, prioritizing algebra one and algebra one readiness for all ninth grade students. And if it's helpful, I think also the, the major, most substantive revisions to the ELA standards were in, in K through five, early literacy. So foundational skills of decoding and encoding, writing foundations were added for the first time in K five and then additional updates to align to the science of reading. So our, the, the high level is that our data needs are, are affirming the work that the board did in the state standards too.
And just to underscore the major differences in the high school level, I mean, that was intentional so that districts were asking for, like, you, you know, more guidance around, you know, when to sort of, how to package the standards into courses and that, that was the intent of that.
Couple of questions, Jay.
Yeah.
Is there a spot where I could look or others could look at longitudinal data? For example, for this year's eleventh graders in two thousand twenty-four, I'm looking at the math, they were at sixty-six percentile. As juniors, they were the sixty-sixth percentile. As freshmen, I think they were at the fiftieth percentile. Is there a convenient way to look at that besides?
Cross-sectionally?
Yeah.
We can certainly put that together. So like, you know, be pivoting this to say like, you, you know, based on the grade progressions, what do the proficiencies levels look like over time? Is that what you're, yeah. I don't have that here, but the data's here.
Is the data available? That's all I'm asking.
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't want you to make up some.
No, no. We're looking at this cross-sectionally. Wow.
And then the, the second question I have is that, is there like, how much is overlap of, of groups as far as if, if somebody is on free or reduced, but they're also, learning disabled or a minority or, is there data on that as far as kids with multiple categories in these areas?
Yes, and we, we can do what's called like a double disaggregation. So you can see the percent of Hispanic students that are also eligible for free or reduced price lunch, et cetera, et cetera. Yes, I have those data and happy, I'm happy to share that.
Okay, yeah. It's, it's available for people to see. Is that what you're saying or?
We don't have that like posted on the website. Or, you know, every spring we do the closing the achievement gaps report. There was a version that we did about three or four years ago that got into the, the specifics around how many kids are in each subgroup, our student group. And we can rerun that so you can get a sense of how many kids are in each student group. And both.
All right. Thank you.
I have a question for the closing achievement gap report. I think in that one you, there was a slide that had, I think, students who are in work-based learning programs or registered apprenticeship programs and how the achievement gap actually was a lot closer for minority students who are in those programs. Is there a way to pull that out to see, you know, how are those school, students who are engaged in those programs, maybe performing in schools and kind of compare that data to see, you know, are they? I, I thought it was really, really interesting that students who were, you know, maybe, because the achievement gap is pretty wide for, you know, Hispanic and minority students. But if they're in a work-based learning program or if they're in a registered apprenticeship program, that achievement gap is, you know, in terms of completing that program. So is it comparable, I guess, in school? Or is it, I guess, it's just, it was, it struck me as kind of, I mean, it's pretty amazing that that's a way of closing the achievement gap, but. I don't know what to do with that data, I guess, so.
Yeah. So I think you're referring to, um, we did the post-secondary readiness reports, um, to the board. A couple of months ago, and for the first time we had those apprenticeship data. And while the N counts were, um, increasing in the percentage of students, um, that were participating in those programs were increasing. They were still relatively small. But, you know, I, I guess the short answer is yes, we can take a look at the long-term course, you know, courses and, and other information around students in those programs to see, you know, uh, what the impact of those programs are in terms of things like closing the achievement gap, et cetera.
I know there's not a way to kind of test that, I guess, like on an ISAP. But I mean, is there a way to? Test that, I don't know, their skills gain knowledge. I mean, obviously if they complete that, then they, you know, but I mean, is that, does that translate to coursework, I guess?
Well, the apprenticeship, um, it, it depends on how the school has, uh, engaged in those activities. I mean, the work-based learning courses, the new definition of work-based learning that was just passed, has, you know, those experiences that are, um, quality experiences that, um, uh, that are sometimes embedded in a course or are a standalone course. We're able to take a look at those data across time. They're relatively new, but I think you bring up the good, a good point. And we're certainly going to be looking at this. You know, to what extent do those high-quality work-based learning experiences really lead to positive outcomes for kids? And how can we replicate that more broadly?
Well, if we're trying to expand work-based learning, those are really good arguments for why we need to do it. And certainly in our, um, underserved and minority populations. Right. Here closing gaps and learning via work-based learning. That seems like an even bigger argument for we need to put more money, time in.
Absolutely. And adding it, and I'll, I'll jump into this in a little bit. But, um, you know, as Director Snow mentioned, with the approval of the ESA plan, our, our new state accountability system, having that indicator as a measure of post-secondary success will also drive the practices in schools, uh, because it's something they're being measured by. So that's sort of an important, uh, component as well. So jumping back to the long-term trends, um, again, math proficiency is up overall long-term. When we're taking a look at students with disabilities, um, you do see, um, uh, again, an increase of, uh, the gap across your different grade levels, increasing in the later grades. Similarly to ELA, uh, the, um, achievement gap narrowed for students with disabilities, uh, pre and post pandemic. So students with disabilities in both ELA and math, same content area are trending in the right direction. For English learners, unfortunately, we're seeing the opposite. So we're actually seeing an increase in the achievement gap similarly to ELA. And back to, uh, Brian's question earlier, these are trending in the right, or the same direction, right? Achievement, uh, is down for English learners, but then the gap is also widening. For, uh, students eligible for free or reduced price lunch, um, it's thirteen, the gap is thirteen percentage points in grade three, increasing slightly into grade eight to be about eighteen percentage points. And the free reduced price lunch gap is, um, is the same as it was 2019 to 2024. For African-American or black students, um, the gap is twenty-seven percentage points in grade three. Forty-nine percent of black students proficiency in math. Thirty-six percentage point gap in grade 11. Um, and the gap is about the same as it was in 2019. Uh, for Hispanic students, um, fifty-eight percent of, uh, proficiency rate in grade three compared to seventy-six. For all kids, eighteen percentage points overall. It's about the same in grade 11 at nineteen percentage points. And for Hispanic students, the overall gap is about the same, but slightly larger, 2019 to 2024. So what does this mean? It's a lot of data in a very short period of time. So it's good news, um, ELA and math for all kids is sort of trending in the right direction, rebounding to post or, or pre-pandemic levels. Large gaps exist between student groups. The results are really mixed. So with students with disabilities, we're seeing the gap narrow. At the same time, we're seeing it widen for English learners. Free reduced price lunch is no change. In ELA, the gaps are narrowing slightly, two percentage points, but no change in math. And you're seeing the opposite effect. It's about the same in ELA, it's, um, and then widening in math. And I think, um, the other thing is, you know, so it's good that, um, in some groups, for some student groups that, um, you know, we're seeing similar gaps. But we need to ask ourselves, is this good enough? When sixty-four percent of students in third grade are proficient in ELA, are, are we doing enough? And certainly the director, uh, pointed out all the work that's happening with science of reading, access to AMIRA, you know, um, that, that can help support, um, uh, practices to increase, you know, grade level proficiency rates in, in grade three as an example. But this just gives you a overall summary of, of kind of where we are. So certainly some successes, but then some challenges as well.
Thank you. I think, and, and just again to pull up, um, uh, the largest student achievement gaps experienced by a student group. Students with disabilities and students who are English language learners, uh, experienced across all grade levels. So, so compiling a forty-five percentage point and a fifty-three percentage point gap prospectively in English language arts. And then students with disabilities and students who are English language learners experienced a forty-one and forty-five percentage point gap in math, which are, are by far the largest, um, achievement gaps experienced by any student group. And that reflected, um, international data as well in comparison to other states. I think one important, uh, note on, um, the, the two percentage point over, uh, 2019 to 2024 decrease in the gap experienced by students with disabilities that Jay raised, that is consistent with other states. Many states saw a narrowing of the achievement gap experienced by students with disabilities because, um, although Iowa had very limited disruption in, uh, in-person instruction, states prioritized in-person instruction for students with disabilities in particular. Um, and then also, uh, states received significant additional federal IDEA funds to provide additional services and supports to students with disabilities, including compensatory education services. But there was no such supplement, um, for students who are English language learners, to support students who are English language learners. So, so those funds are of course now expired, but, um, were, were important in, uh, ensuring, uh, access to, to educational, rigorous educational program for students with disabilities in particular.
Yeah, that was kind of my question. I know we have to track all this and, and we have some, you know, programs for science of reading and then the math. But students with disabilities, you know, I think it, it seems to me that, that the difference in their needs is so wide-ranging that I, is there, you know, a program? And I wouldn't, I don't want to say like a program, but an initiative or some other, you know, that we go about addressing those needs. Obviously additional funding helps. Way we've re-figured the funding with the AEAs, I don't know. But in terms of, you know, academic standards and programming activities, because it is honestly disheartening to see we, we keep, you know, measuring this, which we need to do, but it's a tick up, it's a tick down, it's, but that, the gap just never really seems for any of those groups to have substantial change. And I just, transformationally, what do we need to do? Big question.
Um, I, I think, um, our, our foundational priorities around ensuring strong teacher pipeline, pure recruitment and retention, big focus of that is ensuring teachers are well-prepared to differentiate instruction for students with disabilities and students who are English language learners. That's, um, and I'm just going to go across the priorities, but, um, that's been an area in which, um, and Miriam will touch on this, uh, later in the conversation, but an area in which we've identified, improvement for teacher preparation programs as identified by their candidates. Of course, many of our supports are specifically focused, uh, on ensuring, um, instructional improvement for students with disabilities and students who are, who are English language learners. I failed to mention AMIRA, for example, um, is, it has its strongest evidence of growth for students with disabilities and students who are English language learners and operates in Spanish, for example. So, so I think it is not a single, um, initiative or program, but it's a focus and every single thing that the department drives forward. It's the, uh, um, a, a critical part of, of our approach to, to all education policy, moving forward and, and over the past year.
I'll mention just one last thing, and that is, uh, just, we're, we're taking a look at state level results. And Director Snow alluded to this. We did, uh, participate as all states do in the national assessment of educational progress, the NAEP, um, assessment that was administered this past spring. Those results will be coming out in January and February. So it'll give us, uh, this gives us a view of what we're seeing within the state with our state assessment, but that'll give us a national perspective as well.
What grades is that?
So the main NAEP is grades four and eight, and it's in reading and math.
It's a, a random sample in selected schools.
Correct.
I think, oh, I was just going to add to the AMIRA comment that you made that it's in English and in Spanish. I would think that AI could turn that into any language that the student is speaking. Is that an opportunity moving forward?
I think that's a point of conversation, but that's not currently operational in our offering.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's a, it's a, a very important point. And then just going back to the NAEP component, I, I do think it's important to note that overall Iowa's NAEP rankings went up, uh, in 2019 since the prior administration of NAEP. Iowa, uh, because of the leadership and ensuring that, uh, schools remained open for in-person instruction and limited educational disruptions, experienced very little, uh, declines in student achievement, very little learning loss compared to other states. That, that, uh, is captured in, um, uh, other states, uh, continuing to rebound and, uh, and attain, uh, gains where that learning loss occurred. So it is possible, um, if not probable, that Iowa could decrease in the NAEP rankings because we've seen other states' achievement go down and back up, whereas we have remained pretty steady throughout. Jay, do you want to add to that?
No, I think that's, um, I think a good summary. I'm really interested to see what those results and happy to share it with the board when we get it ourselves.
I'm curious, is, are, are the number of students taking the tests consistent? You know, when you hear about chronic absenteeism and that, is there, is that a? Does that have an impact here statistically?
Our participation rate, um, has, in this last year was ninety-nine percent of students. Um, and even in the pandemic year, we still had, I believe it was six, or ninety-seven percent of students, which was very different than many other states. Some states had thirty percent, fifty percent of students participate.
Follow up with your question, Brian, the schools do a good job of make up tests. And make sure that the kids are gone for a test or two or whatever, that they make them up. And it creates additional work, but it's important work to get done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Yeah, well, I've got one more. So I know another very exciting announcement. I'll try to be brief with this. Director Snow covered, I think, a lot of the main content. But I just wanted to give you, uh, the opportunity to see the full and approved, so very exciting, uh, news that we got our plan approved, um, by the US Department of Education, uh, for our new accountability, our new unified accountability system. So in building the system, so, so I, I presented to the board in January about what the changes we were thinking about are, and this is the final version and, and what schools, um, will, uh, will be measured by on the Iowa's co-performance profiles when that's released later this fall. But in building the accountability system, we had, uh, some foundational principles that we wanted to ensure were, uh, in, in front of mind in terms of designing this new system. We wanted to make sure that it was rigorous, reliable and fair. You know, um, uh, doing a lot of modeling and taking a look at the differences and how our proposed system would play out for big districts, small districts. You know, districts that had large percentages of students, um, that are eligible for free or reduced price lunch. So trying to make sure that any system we implement doesn't, um, uh, over identify a particular kind of school. We wanted that system to be connected to school improvement, um, that it be clear, that it reflects high expectations, um, and easily understood. So transparency, I think, is sort of a cornerstone of this system. This gives you a lot of detail about the input that we received in, uh, during our engagement with the field. So held regional meetings, uh, across the nine regions, attended the curriculum network, which, uh, is a, a network of over four hundred, um, curriculum and instructional leaders, presented to you in January, um, and then sat down with, uh, you know, folks at ISEA, ISB, et cetera, to, uh, get their input as well. There were significant changes from the first version to, uh, what was approved recently. And then lastly, we did a statewide survey, had over fourteen hundred participants. And there was a consensus of support around the changes you'll see. Here's a high-level version. What's that?
Are you presenting?
Oh, shoot. I'm sorry.
Not sure my.
It looks like it kicked me out here. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Sorry about that. So more specifically, uh, the equal weighting of growth and proficiency in this new system, adding science, um, you know, with our focus on STEM within the state. You know, we really felt that it was important that science proficiency be part of the system. The third change is really acknowledging the hard work that it takes for schools and, and educators to get students from not proficient in English to proficient in English. So, um, we're able to, um, uh, provide, um, this, uh, additional, um, support by continuing to measure, um, those students in proficiency and growth results. You know, Brian mentioned chronic absenteeism. It was, you, you know, I, I don't know if folks saw the Telegraph this morning, but the headline was about, you know, schools, the changes that schools are making to implement, um, uh, changes due to chronic absenteeism that was passed in this last legislative session. It's also part of our accountability system. So we're measuring that, um, which is new, but then we're also, uh, building an attendance growth indicator, which I'll talk a little bit more about. We're adding both the four and five-year rate, I'm sorry, adding the five-year rate in. Um, and then we're changing the measures, um, for post-secondary readiness and then changes to how scores are calculated overall, so that they're more transparent and understandable. This gives you a, a high-level overview of the different measures that I just showed you in the point system. So as an example, uh, proficiency in it, for English language arts is out of a hundred-point scale. Proficiency overall is three hundred points. Growth across ELA and math and growth specifically to English learners as measured by our English language. and math, and growth specifically to English learners as measured by our English Language Assessment, um, also makes up 300 points, chronic absenteeism, et cetera. So, um, pretty much everything is out of 100 points. Um, in some cases, we're splitting the 100 points between two measures. This gives you a, um, this next slide sort of depicts how we're trying to be more transparent, um, in the calculation of scores. So this, uh, top, um, represents the way that we did it in our old, uh, plan. So there was like conversion that happened to standardized scores, and there was a weighting to get to the total points. Um, but now if a school has an ELA proficiency level of 80.9, it would receive 80.9 points for that measure. So really trying to make this transparent, um, have received some really good feedback that this particular change makes it a lot easier for schools to set goals because they are able to figure out more specifically, you know, um, how to, how that equates to points.
Does this change anyone's scores, the new AMIRA?
Great point. I should have mentioned that upfront. Um, as this new system is approved, we've also received reapproval to reset all the designations for all schools. So any school that had an existing designation under the old system that goes away with new designations coming out this fall.
So there are going to be some who maybe drop down and some who move up and.
There'll be some that are newly identified with this new system. Um, and Tina and I were having a side conversation about what that, um, rollout should have looked like and really trying to provide, um, in-depth opportunity for schools to really understand why they were identified if they're new. Great question. Thank you. Um, this gives you a side-by-side, you know, I'm not going to sort of talk about the prior accountability system, um, but, uh, you know, this gives you a sense of, um, what it'll look like when we come out with the new performance profiles this fall. Um, honing in specifically on chronic absenteeism, uh, the rate itself is the percent of students in your school that miss 10% or more of their school year. So on a 180-day calendar, that's, school would, or that student would have to miss 18 days or more. The attendance growth indicator is, um, um, again, as Director Snow mentioned, this is new, it's innovative, but what we really were trying to accomplish is, um, provide an ability to improve, and this measure will, um, I think, honor that intent. And what we're doing is we're looking at kids that were chronically absent in the 22, 23 school year. We're taking a look at, okay, what did Jay's attendance look like in 22, 23? We know that he missed 18 days or more of school. And then we're looking at how much improvement did Jay have? So i- if I improved and was, you know, not chronically absent at all or not absent at all, that would account towards, um, that increased attendance rate for chronically absent students. So kid, they can be tracked at the kid level, it can be tracked at the school level, but, um, uh, we wanted to, uh, make sure that the magnitude of increase in attendance also counted. Um, so it's just a brief description of how we're going to calculate that.
Oh, I'll, a question with the chronic absenteeism. What if I attend a school that has a four-day school week? How does that, is 10 days, 10 days regardless, or is there going to be waiting with that, or how's that?
Well, it's based on the total number of days. So you wouldn't have 100-day, 180-day calendar. You might have 100, I'm making this up. I don't know what the number is. Let's say, let's say it's 150. So that would be your denominator. Now, the number of days are dependent on the denominator, total school days. So we're trying to account for that based on your calendar.
And days based on 100.
Or 10%. 10%, sorry. Whatever your school year. So if you attended half of the school year in that school, that's what we'll be measuring that school on, if that makes sense. So we're adjusting to the number of days enrolled, um, for a given kid or for a given calendar. Um, similar at the high school level, um, kept the five-year rate, got a lot of rich feedback, uh, that that was really important to sort of honor the work that it takes to get all kids to graduate, not just within four years, although we'd still like to see as many kids as gr- yeah, as possible graduate within that four-year timeframe. Um, digging into the post-secondary readiness indicator changes that, um, Director Snow mentioned in her opening comments, um, and, uh, so, so work-based learning, high-quality work, work-based learning, um, is now part of the system. Um, the old measures you can see here, um, in the prior system are going away. So we're focused on the percent of students that participate in a high-quality work-based learning experience. Um, the second measure this fall are the percent of students that attain college credit while in high school. Um, so they're enrolled in a community college. They, uh, received, um, that credit is really what we're focusing on. And then the last piece that we're building out this year that will be implemented next year, um, there was some discussion earlier about, um, the clearinghouse for, uh, industry-recognized credentials and some of the criteria that we use to sort of examine those and, and determine if they're, uh, meet that standard. That'll be phased in, in the 2025, uh, version, um, but it will be part of the system next year.
And those, then those numbers will change to a 33, or will they, or did they be divided evenly among those categories?
Um, we're, we're discussing that. It could be a third, a third, a third. Um, we might provide a transition, like as schools, you know, uh, build up capacity, provide more opportunity, we might combine one of them on a temporary basis. We want these to be standalone and robust. At the same time, we don't, you know, given that some schools are just starting out here, we also don't want to, um, you know, provide a penalty, yeah, or too much.
Okay. I know I missed this, Jay, with participation rate. I know it's not configured, but what is the base for their participation rate?
So it's the, uh, I'll, I've got a, a graphic at the end of the slide that shows how that plays in. That's a really good point. Um, that participation rate was part of the point system, and it's no longer. However, it does play an important role in schools' overall scores. Um, uh, so to answer your question, a school that doesn't meet the minimum 95%, which is under federal statute, we can't change that, um, will drop a rating category. So if that school was an exceptional school, that school would then be a high-performing school due to a non-compliant participation rate. So it's going to really matter, but it'll matter differently.
So, eh, and participation rate is not a student outcome measure. It is a compliance with federal law measure, and that is why it's incorporated differently.
Good question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Here's a few other, um, updates. Um, so, uh, one of the things I think that schools are really going to like as well, received a lot of positive feedback, is schools that, um, in, under the prior system, once you were designated as a TSI or, or school, um, uh, in need of targeted support and improvement, you were in a three-year cycle. Um, and there was sort of some helplessness there. In some cases, a school would, you know, I've had multiple phone calls with superintendents to say like, you know, it was due to a non-compliant participation rate. They figured out it was one or two kids that didn't take the test and, and they were sort of feeling helpless, like feeling that now I'm sort of stuck for three years. In this particular case, if that school improves past the cut point, they'll be able to exit, um, that targeted status. And lastly, um, this is a graphical depiction of sort of two things. Um, so whoops. Um, trying to, uh, show you how a non-compliance participation rate plays in. Um, so again, a drop in a level, um, is what will happen. And instead of having a standalone, a standalone targeted designation, a targeted school will, um, also decrease a performance rating level, um, due to an underperforming student group. So we're trying to unify by using one set of labels and ratings, um, uh, to our, our new accountability system.
Thank you. And just, sorry, we'll go back real quick.
Yeah.
Um, so participation rate, assessment participation rate, to be clear, has to be incorporated in the school accountability system. Um, so, so that's, that is how it's incorporated. The comprehensive support and improvement or CSI, um, uh, school identification is one under ESSA, under federal law, as is the targeted support, uh, and improvement or TSI, uh, designation. So the terms exceptional, high-performing, commendable, acceptable, needs improvement priority are all of the state statutory designations. So this is, uh, an incorporation of both federal and state accountability requirements in a single unified system. We got a lot of feedback in the process that it is confusing to essentially have two separate systems, one to meet state accountability requirements, one to meet federal accountability requirements. A lot of questions of what system am I meant to be, um, responding to? Is my community to be focused on? What set of incentives are you trying to inset, to set with the accountability system? And, and that's why it was critical, again, to, to unify, um, and meet all the federal and state requirements in a single system.
I like that a lot.
What other questions do you have? There's a lot of work that went into this plan. I mean, we started modeling last October, and we're now here in September with approval. Um, these aren't, uh, easy changes. Um, you know, anything substantive like this takes a fair amount of time. We were in negotiations with the U.S. Department of Ed, uh, for about five months, um, you know, trying to either clarify or tweak it, um, so that it made sense for our context, but also would, would be approved ultimately.
I, I would say, suggest that when you're, when you're undergoing this, your consideration of how to wait, uh, industry-recognized credentials with work-based learning and the college credit, I, I would be a little concerned that the industry-recognized credentials, I assume, would be earned, like through a CTE program. Um, they're not, that's not the same as, as learning how to work with an employer and in a place of employment. And I would submit to you, it's probably of less value because it's more focused on a credential as opposed to learning how to work. And the thing that we hear from employers every day is kids need to learn how to work. That's the most important thing that comes out of work-based learning. Yeah, it's great if they get skills. It's great if they get a credential, but more important to us and to them, frankly, is learning how to operate within a working environment. And so I would, I would exercise a little caution in, in equating credential attainment, the same as the work, work experience where you're, where you're doing both, right? Working at a place of employment and hopefully earning a credential through a work-based learning program. I don't think they're the same. I would urge some caution in trying to make.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and to provide additional context, I think, uh, the intent of the post-secondary readiness indicator was to ensure that we were reflecting all post-secondary pathways. We know that work-based learning, um, uh, supports all post-secondary pathways. It's valuable, uh, as you pursue any post-secondary pathway. Um, so we wanted to ensure work-based learning across all pathways, and then college credit as well as industry-recognized credentials for, uh, college and career pathways, um, if, if that helps clarify, uh, the, the, um, uh, very reflective intent. And then I just, as we close out, want to, um, thank the thousands, truly thousands of stakeholders, um, that spent, uh, uh, their time and, and expertise to support, uh, us together in building a best-in-class accountability system. Uh, this is the result of, uh, robust consultation processes across Iowa, um, and the expertise of, of, um, many education leaders and stakeholders. So we appreciate them investing their time, uh, uh, to help inform and build this system together.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
All right. Item eight. Teacher preparation standards and approval process review.
Thank you for the opportunity, uh, to present to you the educator preparation standards and the review process that we have for, uh, reviewing the quality of the educator preparation programs in the state. Um, I'm presenting on behalf of the educator quality team. Um, and, um, I can make sure that, um, I do want to recognize my team, um, because they have, um, they have brought a lot of value to our process. We, we work together, making sure that we continue to improve our process and the educator, uh, preparation programs. Make sure those boxes are.
Do you move in front of the microphone a little bit?
Sure. I can quickly address some of the pieces that I will be talking about today. Um, um, one of the slides that is shared with you is talking about the Iowa Code 256.7. Uh, that's the duties of state board, and it also talks about some of the authorities that the state board has that is related to the educator preparation programs and the program approvals. There are four main, um, areas, and, um, and one of them is prescribing standards for program reviews and approval. Um, second one is process for the program approval, both in-state and out-of-state, and enforcing the, um, standards, um, ensuring that all the programs approved by the, this, um, if they are including any advanced dyslexia programs, that also those programs are approved by the Iowa Reading Research Center. This was an addition that was added in 2020. Iowa Reading Research Center finished the first cohort. That was a pilot cohort. And then now we have one program that actually, uh, applied and was approved, um, to offer that, um, dyslexia endorsement, and that's in grand view. So we are able to now continue to approve new programs in that area. Um, and then, uh, when there are out-of-state programs, the state board have the authority to determine if there are costs and expenses associated with that review to, um, require that they would pay for that cost if they're out-of-state programs. Um, in the next slide. Might have to give up the slide.
Presentation mode, I think.
Yeah, it is a. In the next slide that is also shared with you, um, you see, uh, um, alignment of the goals of our team, educator quality team, with the state board goals, with the department goals, and with the governor's, uh, priorities. Um, I, I'm just going to quickly, um, address a few of them. Um, one of the first ones, of course, is evaluating the programs for making sure that they are continuously complying with the, uh, state rules, um, and code. Uh, the second one is, uh, utilizing data, um, regarding the district-specific areas of need, uh, for the teacher pipeline and trends to, um, assessing those trends to focus on the teacher pipeline and providing reports that is helpful to the programs and the state for the decision-making. Um, supporting the program through the technical, technical assistance that we are providing to them, but also sharing the evidence-based data, um, like survey of, um, um, recent graduates, teachers, and their supervisors and administrators and their supervisors, to determine some of the areas that they are addressing as areas of need or need to work more, utilizing that data for decision-making and improving the rules. Um, and also, um, requirements to ensure all the educators are prepared, uh, to address the needs of students. Uh, we are also. Uh, we are also working on improvements to this as a result of the prior, um, legislation. We are improving the scientifically-based, um, instruction for the reading and, um, those areas in our rules. My slide, like to go back to our team. In the next slide, I'm presenting to you the process. I'm just going to, what you have in front of you is a very broad, um, list of the steps that we have, but there are a lot of steps in between those. I'm gonna try to make that a very quick presentation, but what you see here is a work of three years that will happen in our process of approval. It starts with two years prior to the site visit and, uh, program review. We do a pre-self a study meeting with the program, prepare them on what are the things that they need to prepare? What are the evidences they need to provide for us? The program will conduct a self, uh, study and we provide a support, uh, system, calling it cohort meetings for those programs that are up for a review on the same year. We gather them together several times, at least six times in a year to walk through the standards, making sure that they have an understanding and also being able to address their questions about those standards, clarifying some of the ways they can address or improve the ways they are meeting or going above and beyond the standards. Then the program, um, will write a, um, report. And meanwhile that they are doing that, we are calling for volunteers. We are utilizing a lot of resources from the volunteers from the field. We have, uh, state panel members, um, who are nine members of, from the educator preparation programs. Many of them are chairs or individuals who have had experience reviewing programs. Those individuals are serving in a term of three years of, to do a desk review for all the programs in that three years that they are serving. So it's approximately four to six program per year that they do a desk review. And that's to bring some level of consistency on how those programs are being reviewed. And then we also have site visit team members for each program. Uh, for the site visit team members, those are going to be the individuals who also participate in the, uh, desk review. But in addition to that, they go onsite and conduct the interviews and some of the additional data collection that needs to happen. And, and we are always so grateful for those volunteers who are participating because they're bringing a valuable experience and expertise from their program. They're experts in the field and they add a value to our process. Then the curriculum review happens. That's including the BOEE review and then another step for our process. Uh, Board of Educational Examiners, uh, will review the curriculum for specific endorsements areas and specific requirements that they have in their code, chapter thirteen, fourteen and, um, twenty-four, specifically for the different programs that are out there and endorsements. And then we also look at the curriculum from the knowledge, skills and disposition standpoints that are in our chapter seventy-nine. We also send a stakeholder surveys prior to the site visit. So about four months before the site visit or earlier, we will ask the program to share these surveys with the stakeholders. There is a minimum of six for it, only a teacher prep and up to, um, as many as, uh, you know, just multiply that by any program, added program that the institution have. We receive the survey data directly from those stakeholders. And then that helps us determine what focus groups we need to schedule during the site visit. We do a preliminary review, as I mentioned, and we engage the state, state panel members and site visit team members. We send a preliminary report to the program and ask them to provide a response to that prior to the site visit. That helps us to gather the information and data and evidence that we need before the site visit because our site visit is, uh, three, four days. And there is no way that you can gather all the information about the program in those three, four days unless you have a solid, um, data and also evidence in front of you. So program provides that, respond to us prior to the site visit. We review that and we also go to the site visit, uh, with the site visit team members. After the site visit, we, during the site visit, we do interviews. We do focus group with the stakeholders that maybe we didn't have as many responses. If there were responses that we were like, well, we may need to follow up with this group of stakeholders because there are some responses that are alerting or they're, you know, lightening it. You know, there's something that we need to follow up. So we do those focus groups and then we also go to classrooms. I want to address this one because I know it, it came up as one of the questions in one of the presentations. When we go to classroom, we don't go to observe the faculty who teach. We go to see as many candidates in the program as possible. We want to see candidates from the, who are first year, sophomore, junior and senior. So we choose those classes very, uh, carefully to make sure that we can talk with all the candidates throughout the program and from the different programs that they have. After the site visit, we send a report to the program. The program provide a response. They have to address the compliance concerns prior to us bringing them to the board. They have about four months after the report is sent to them. And, um, and then when we bring them to the board, we share all the initial fund findings and then how they address the compliance, if there were compliance in their report. If there are complaints that were not resolved, we would not recommend the program for the approval because there are options to, for non-approval or conditional approval. There has been cases where the program has chosen to not address a compliance in relation to, let's say ESL endorsement. And we have had them just eliminate that endorsement if they were not willing to continue to comply or they didn't have the resources to do that before we recommend them for approval. After the state board approval, we, um, ask program for their feedback on the whole process, what support they received, how good it was and how we can improve the process that we have to support them. And then we also have a one-year follow-up to make sure that if they address a compliance that we found in the site visit, that they continue to address that. And as an addition, we have asked that each program that had compliance concerns, they continue to add, address that for three years after the site visit in the annual report. This slide is kind of self-explanatory. Uh, generally we have three region programs, uh, twenty-six privates, nine AEA's, um, who offer para-educator preparation programs and nine community colleges who offer para-educator preparation programs. Amongst all of those regions and private institutions, we also have other programs that are offered. So we have a total of forty-five elementary and secondary education programs and over all of a hundred-two programs, including professional school counselors and administrators and other programs.
We're counting the teacher registered apprenticeship.
So they are embedded throughout our educator preparation programs. Uh, we do have about fourteen of the institutions. So at least half of the institutions are participating in that program.
I was just wondering because I thought that might be something you want to highlight because that's.
It's outstanding, yes.
Teacher para-educator registered apprenticeship program in the country, right?
Yes.
And we are getting calls every day from other states who want to implement these programs. So it's really.
Yes.
We should be proud.
We have helped, uh, Kansas, we have helped other states to implement that. I, I am so grateful personally to that program because of that funding that was provided. We are producing, uh, many educators that otherwise would have been deficit in our teacher pipeline. And we have, you're right that we have the highest number and we are amongst the highest states producing teachers in that pipeline. The chapter seventy-nine and chapter eighty, just for your knowledge, this is the chapters that we use. These are the two chapters that we use for reviewing the program. Chapter seventy-nine has teacher prep, administrator preparation, uh, other programs like professional school counselor, school social worker, um, and also teacher intern preparation program that was integrated into that. And then chapter eighty has the para-educator preparation program standards. Those are including the governance, diversity, faculty assessment of the program. And then we also review the, uh, clinical and knowledge, skills and disposition for every program separately under their own standards. One of the last pieces in my presentation is, uh, we had some impact by the legislation in the 2024 and, um, some of those include the, uh, twenty, uh, House File 2025 that included the, uh, science of reading implementation and its implications for the higher ed institutions and how we can utilize it in the higher ed so that we are building the foundation for the teachers prepared to now implement it in the, uh, K-12. House File 2618 is the foundation of reading assessment, which we are in the process of implementing that, working to bring the test into the state and providing the capacity. House File 255 includes some changes to the alternative programs that we have teacher intern programs and some of the out-of-state programs, which we are now writing some rules that will be coming to the board. And that's what director referred to early on, that we are working on some rule changes. And then House File 2411, which is, um, student-teacher flexibility, we had a very strict student teaching requirements. This, this, um, Senate file is helping the, um, ed prep programs to be flexible, to count some of those equivalent experience that has happened before towards the student teaching. And it's a very good recognition of prior experience for the students, especially those who are non-traditional students. Uh, we get a lot of calls thanking us for that. There are some, there's always some challenges with every code and rule that is introduced. But, um, I would say that we have got a very positive, uh, response from that, uh, specifically from the non-traditional students or those who are in TPRA or other work-based learning programs. And they have all of this experience that is aligned and applicable, but it was not being counted towards that experience before. So.
Essentially reducing the amount of time individuals who go all the way through a registered apprenticeship program have to spend student teaching instead of getting done with the program and then having to do a semester of student teaching, which they just spent the last four years doing. Now they just have to.
Yes. They, they can reduce it up to that point. And I'm very careful about saying that it's really not reducing the student teaching. The student teaching has happened. It's, it's just that we are recognizing it and it helps the candidates graduate faster.
Thank you for that important clarification, Miriam. I think, um, there, there was a lot of confusion about this point in particular. Uh, and we know that high-quality student teaching is critical to, to being successful as a future educator. Um, a- and again, it's recognition of rigorous qualifying experience and recognition of work-based learning that occurred. So thank you for, for the clarification.
Yeah. Yes, we, we, we really made sure that it's very clear because based on the requirements, every one of those prior experiences have to meet what is acceptable for the student teaching. So if it's not meeting those requirements, that experience is not counting. And we are asking the programs to collect that information to show us the evidence that they have, they have counted the right experience. Uh, we're going to have two rounds of review of the rules. The first round is going to engage the, the stakeholders in reviewing what was, uh, impacted by the prior legislation, which I just talked about. Uh, the goal is to accelerating the implementation of scientifically-based reading, which I'm so grateful to, I have to say, shout that to director because we were able to include the higher ed faculty members in the letters training. And as of today, we have seventy-four faculty members from higher ed who have signed up for that. And that helps to make sure that we can continue to prepare the candidates uh, as opposed to trying to train them after they become a teacher. Providing clarity regarding details of foundational reading assessment and providing clarity regarding the implication of changes to the program reviews, including the alternative programs. And then a second round of, um, review, uh, which was recommended by the director. And, um, I think it's a very important and necessary step for us to take. Uh, we have not reviewed our rules, uh, based on the, uh, current research for a long time. That, the purpose of this review is to review the current research, uh, the changes that need to happen in our preparation, uh, rules and also making sure that we have measurable standards and clear benchmarks that we are going away more and more from the subjective, uh, review of the program and more benchmark and, um, measurable, uh, areas that we can review when we go to review the programs. I want to thank you for your time, um, and if there are questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question. Oh, sorry. Miriam, I'm not sure if this is for you or for Director Snow, but, um, and you may have already mentioned the senior director's report, um, science of reading. You, you mentioned that, um, that teachers in the preparation programs were now able to participate in that, which I think is great. So AMIRA, are they able to get trained on that as well? So that they can start teaching students about that? So when they go out into the classroom, they're able to, or is that not yet?
Just a quick point of clarification. It is, um, professors in teacher preparation programs, including getting their administrator license and letters training, which, um, uh, Board Member Maester, link to, to your good questions around how are we supporting teacher prep programs and aligning to the science of reading? That, that is a critical point. So thanks for raising that. On, on, uh, the personalized reading tutoring through AMIRA, that is certainly something that we could help support orientation to for new teachers, but, but it's intended to serve students in the classroom. So, um, districts are also supporting that directly and we're providing professional learning to districts, um, and, and school, uh, schools as well to ensure that they're prepared to, um, facilitate the use of AMIRA. There's also an extensive data platform that specifically articulates, uh, what foundational skills a child may be excelling in or may, may need support in, what interventions were deployed and does progress monitoring, uh, through, uh, skills and knowledge attained during the tutoring? So that, that does require some professional learning.
No, I'm, this is probably not as on topic as I'd like it to be, but you know, uh, the Department of Ed is offering a lot of great programs through the state, uh, the reporting system, for example. This, um, how do we get schools to sign on to more of these programs? It, it's just a challenge. And I don't know why they would choose to spend district dollars on things that the state is providing.
That's one of the things with the ed prep programs. We ask that if they don't have any faculty who sign up for letters training, which is an expensive training, that they will have to show us their plan on the faculty development that they will be providing. So I think that except for two programs, everybody else have signed up their faculty and those two have a different plan that they're sharing with us this month.
But AMIRA would be another one that, um, I would hope schools would absolutely jump on the bandwagon.
Of course, and I think the first step is awareness, which is our responsibility. Um, and, and that has been provided statewide, uh, for only a, a couple of weeks and we've already got a third of school districts signed up. So I do think it's just the, the time and capacity to learn about opportunities, to get trained up on opportunities. Um, and, and we'll continue to support, um, school leaders and educators and, and those efforts too.
I think you're being generous.
Anything else?
Is there a way we could see, um, where, um, or like a map of work-based learning programs throughout the state and see where they are? I mean, where are they, you know, how many there are? You guys have that data in terms of like a map where we could see they're in these areas? Maybe there's some that where they're not or.
I, I, it, it may be helpful to have a follow-up presentation on work-based learning in particular. So yes, that's, and that's incorporated into our CTE programs as well. And then we've got the attainment of work-based learning experiences. And, and, uh, student group information about that too. So I think that, that threads a lot of the, the, um, follow-up questions from this conversation today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more presentation, just, uh, heads up for the group that we will have this presentation and we will have a, uh, a working lunch to cover the last two agenda items. But we will have this presentation and we will have a, a working lunch to cover the last two agenda items. Try to be on schedule for the afternoon if you can.
And we've got Chief Amy Giskey participating virtually, but I'm also really excited. Yeah, I think you see a new face or maybe not new to, to many of you at the end of the table. Robin Lilenthal just recently joined the team as the administrative consultant for community colleges. She has rich experience that she's going to tell you about, but we're thrilled to have her.
Thank you. Just going to share my screen here really quick so you can get the presentation going. There it is. All right.
Excellent. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
You can.
Okay, good. And joining you from Baltimore, so very good to be with you. I think you all know me, my name's Amy Giskey, chief for community colleges. I co-lead state accreditation with Heather Meissen, administrative consultant for C T E. So she's also joining us online. In addition to co-leading accreditation, Heather leads the department priorities related to industry-recognized credentials and regional planning partnerships for our bureau. And then with you in the room, as Director Snow said, is Robin Lilienthal. She is our new administrative consultant for community colleges. So since she's new, just joining us this past month, Robin, would you mind introducing yourself?
Absolutely. I'm really excited to have joined the department after a thirty-year career in the community college field. I retired in June after twenty-four years with Iowa Valley Community College District, serving as the provost of Marshall Town Community College. I've also held administrative positions with D Mac, with St. Ambrose University and with Iowa State University. And I'm also a trained Higher Learning Commission peer reviewer. So I'm really happy to be part of this presentation and really more importantly, week five on the job. So thanks for having me.
We've thrown her right into the exciting work. Oh, thank you, Robin. Today, Robin and I will be providing you with an overview of community college state accreditation process and standards. As you know, the department is looking at how we might improve this work moving forward. But before engaging you in that important work, we wanted to first provide you a solid foundation of knowledge on the existing process and procedures to inform our collective work in creating a best-in-class state accreditation process for Iowa's community colleges. So I'll draw your attention first to a few essential guiding principles outlined in Iowa code related to our current community college process. First, it's the state board that's charged with establishing an accreditation process for community colleges. This is why we're starting the conversation with you. As board members, you will ultimately determine any revisions to the standards and process. Next, code states that the accreditation process shall be jointly developed and agreed upon by the department and the community colleges. We have operationalized this code requirement historically through an accreditation advisory committee. This committee was established when the state accreditation process first began in the nineteen ninety's. Each college has one representative on the committee and individuals represent various role groups across the college such as presidents, C A, chief academic officers, chief financial officers and faculty. The committee meets once per year and advises the department on major changes planned for the following year's state accreditation cycle. The final guiding principle is that state accreditation shall not duplicate the work of the Higher Learning Commission, which is the institutional accrediting body for all higher ed institutions in Iowa. Instead, state accreditation exists to meet the needs of the state that are not met by H L C.
In the United States, the higher education institutions are expected to maintain acceptable levels of quality, which are overseen by accreditation processes. Accreditation involves non-governmental entities in the form of accrediting agencies as well as federal and state agencies. These three entities are formerly known as the triad. Accreditation quality assurance functions as one of the main elements of oversight governing the Higher Education Act's federal student aid programs. In order for a student to receive federal student aid, the institution must be accredited by a nationally recognized accrediting agency. Individual colleges are impacted by accreditation oversight within the triad because H L C accreditation gives them access to federal financial aid for their students and state accreditation gives them access to state general aid. Each triad member operates independently and focuses on issues within their scope with a commitment to minimizing overlap so that unnecessary burden on the institution is limited. H L C, as I mentioned, is one of six accrediting organizations recognized by the U.S. Department of Education and the Council for Higher Education Accreditation. H L C is responsible for validating program quality wherever and however it is offered, meaning distance learning at high schools and on college campuses. H L C examines institutional quality related to governance and administration, institutional mission, financial sustainability and sufficiency of resources. In addition to some administrative requirements, the major requirements for accreditation, including meeting the criteria for accreditation, fulfilling a list of assumed practices and upholding federal compliance requirements. The criterion for accreditation are listed in the left column. They're written intentionally broad so that they can apply to all types of institutions. But colleges are expected to respond with a narrative description and evidence that illustrates how they specifically meet each of the criterion. The assumed practices are a list of over fifty practices that every institution is expected to fulfill and includes such areas as conflict of interest policies, transparency of information, governing body roles and responsibilities, minimum program links, general education requirements, faculty roles and curriculum oversight, financial aid advising and budget processes. Federal compliance requirements focus on the title four financial aid and quality assurance goals. In addition, H L C regularly reviews financial indicators for risk, any substantial changes made to academic offerings and operations, conducts multi-location audits and monitors any areas of concern. H L C relies on a massive team of peer reviewers to conduct the accreditation process. They use a ten-year review cycle. Two pathways are available for colleges to pursue, but both employ formal engagement through assurance arguments and peer review. Teams at four, years four and ten. Each year, institutions submit an institutional update that surveys their organizational health.
Now that you have some information about the triad of accreditation partnerships and how H L C accreditation works, I'd like to remind you about Iowa's process for accreditation as it aligns with the triad and ensures compliance with Iowa code. The cycle of state accreditation is also a ten-year cycle with interim review at year five with three colleges evaluated each year. Currently, there are two primary and distinct components and intentions of our process. First, the assurance component ensures compliance with state law not monitored by H L C. The continuous improvement component occurs during the comprehensive phase only. Colleges select a special topic related to an area of strategic growth or priority for the college, and the department arranges for a sharing of best practices from other professionals to help inform ways to improve the work of the college in that area. Both comprehensive and interim visits are conducted onsite and include the assurance component, where we review H L C's latest visit and compliance with state standards. Currently, there are two primary differences between comprehensive and interim reviews. First, during comprehensive visits, external reviewers join department staff for the onsite visit. During interim visits, they would only participate in the desk review. And only comprehensive visits include the special topic, continuous improvement, quality component. Our accreditation process has four primary phases, pre-review task, desk review, site visit and reporting. The pre-review phase begins about five months prior to a visit and includes tasks such as convening review team members, working with the college to identify their special topic, generating data internally for reviewers to consider and making additional data requests of the college. Pre-visit technical assistance with the college includes providing guidance documents such as our accreditation guides and orientation and training meeting with the college team and ongoing correspondence between the college and department staff. Once pre-review tasks are complete, we move to desk review. This occurs thirty days prior to the visit. Internal and external review team members thoroughly examine submitted desk review items and use our desk review checklist to verify compliance, compliance with code and note questions requiring follow-up. I've included a link to our desk review checklist at the end of this presentation. This will give you a very good sense of what we look for during desk review. And this slide shows a portion of one standard, career and technical education program evaluation and review. Our checklist document outlines the state requirement listed in code, examples of evidence the reviewer should be looking for, a place for the reviewer to mark their assessment of whether or not that standard was met, identification of strengths and concerns, and notes about additional follow-up questions. Phase three involves the site visit, which lasts two days and is always onsite at the college, often involving multiple campuses. During the site visit, reviewers meet with teams of college personnel to review standards not evaluated during desk review and to follow up on potential compliance issues noted during desk review. The site visit also includes a campus tour and an interview with stakeholder groups like faculty and students. During the comprehensive visit, time is allocated for the special topic for improvement. In addition to meeting state accreditation process requirements, the site visit also serves to conduct a Perkins equipment audit and the college's federal equity compliance visit. These compliance functions have been rolled together over the years into one visit to reduce administrative burden on college staff. Then finally, the reporting phase includes a reporting of initial findings at the visit, an opportunity for the college to review a draft report and make corrections of errors of fact and a final report for presentation to the state board for approval. If the accreditation review contains findings, department staff collaborate with the college to establish corrective actions and timelines. This process is generally completed within six months of the site visit, depending on the nature of the finding. Before we finish, I'd like to spend a few minutes discussing the state standards and how they align with the H L C criteria. Because as I mentioned, that is a guiding principle that they will not duplicate one another. This slide outlines each of the state's standards and their code reference in column one. The mid, the middle column lists the H L C criteria or assumed practice that relate to the state standard. If it is blank, then there is no comparable H L C component to align with the state standard. The column on the right tells us the nature of the relationship between the two. If it's discrete, then the state standard is unique and not reviewed in any way by H L C. If the indicator is complementary, then the state standard aligns with the listed H L C criterion. But the state standard provides more detail and more specific interpretation required specifically by Iowa law. If the indicator is both discrete and complementary, then there are specific components outlined in state code that are not covered by H L C, but the alignment is worth noting. It's also worth noting that there were no components of the state accreditation process that have been identified as duplicative of the H L C process. A bit more detail on the alignment of each standard to help you can kind of conceptualize what some of these mean. Looking first at faculty qualifications. Iowa's community colleges have worked with the state to establish agreed upon standards and credit thresholds for determining that faculty are indeed qualified for the courses they're teaching. While H L C rules require faculty to be appropriately qualified, new H L C guidelines leave room for a great deal of institutional autonomy and discretion when determining how the institution will define appropriate qualifications. So in Iowa, to ensure critical consistency across our fifteen colleges, Iowa code requires at least twelve credits to qualify to teach a particular discipline. And this consistent credit threshold is verified during our state accreditation process. Moving to faculty load, Iowa code defines explicit rules for determining the maximum number of credits a faculty member can teach per semester. This standard complements H L C criterion three related to having the faculty and staff sufficient to provide effective, high-quality program and student services. But H L C does not dictate a specific teaching load maximum. Iowa code does to ensure that faculty are not teaching at levels that would reduce their teaching quality. And these maximums are indeed are, again, monitored during state accreditation. For special needs and protected classes, Iowa code and Federal Office of Civil Rights and O C T memorandum of methods of, of administration ensure that students with disabilities have equal access to programs and services and to verify the college's publications of annual and continuous nondiscrimination statements. H L C does not monitor this in any way. While there is federal law, the federal government implements compliance via an agreement with the states. So the federal government is not mon, they monitor, monitor it through the states and we implement it through state accreditation. C T E program review standard ensures compliance with a very specific C T E standards for conducting C T E program review standards outlined in code. H L C's process is very outcomes-driven for all pro, programs and they do not differentiate in any way by program type. So Iowa code goes a level deeper with the C T E. Physical plants and facilities, state accreditation again ensures compliance with code and H L C just broadly looks at assurances that the resources, they have the resources to support their institution's current operations and future sustainability. As it relates to strategic planning, state code requires colleges to have a strategic plan that drives their decision-making and that that plan should be updated every five years. H L C does require some type of systemic process for quality improvement, but H L C does not require a strategic plan and they have no timeframe requirement for planning. So they make, also make no mention of specific elements that must be included within an institutional plan. They just want to see that some type of system exists. The quality faculty plan standard ensures compliance with a, a unique chapter of Iowa code designed to ensure the ongoing improvement of teaching and learning at Iowa's community colleges. One such requirement is that all credit instructors receive regular, ongoing professional development related to their professional competencies. H L C has no such requirement. And then finally, senior year plus. This standard ensures compliance with another unique chapter of Iowa code focused on Iowa senior year plus policy, such as ensuring institutions are not placing restrictions on participation in senior year plus. And again, H L C does not man, monitor these aspects of concurrent enrollment in any way. I've listed the code references for you to illustrate that our accreditation process is used not only to monitor compliance with the accreditation chapter of Iowa code, but to ensure compliance with all major Iowa educational policy and law governing the community colleges. So we've provided you with background on both H L C as well as the current state accreditation process. Now we'd like to share with you some potential improvements to state accreditation for you to consider. First, you've seen how our current process leans more heavily toward the assurance compliance function of accreditation. While an essential function, we believe there is an opportunity to place greater emphasis on outcomes-based college planning focused on student success and institutional effectiveness and accountability. Next, we believe we could leverage existing data systems to identify outcome benchmarks and key areas of priority for the state. We could then differentiate our accreditation process based on those outcomes. Results from the outcomes rubric could inform focus area for the college, interview topics and questions, post-visit technical support from the department and potentially the length and scope of the interim visit. It's clear from the previous slide that the assurance component remains necessary to ensure compliance with Iowa code, but meaningful revisions to our chapter twenty-one related to outcomes-based planning, process differentiation based on state benchmarking could help assure continued quality education for Iowa students and stakeholders served by the community colleges. It's important to note that we will need to be mindful of our third guiding principle, that state accreditation should complement but not duplicate H L C as H L C's process is also geared heavily towards institutional effectiveness, ongoing process improvement and even recently a stronger focus on outcomes data. So this is an exciting transformative project involving many stakeholders. Here's a tentative schedule for activities in coming months. We hope to have the revised accreditation program and process implemented for the academic year twenty-five, twenty-six cycle. You will see this tentative timeline. In this timeline, there is engagement with the community college advisory committee, which is at the new s, s board subcommittee and at least two additional conversations with all of you at this board table. On the next slide, we've organized key accreditation resources for you. Should you want to dig into anything that we've talked about today in more detail. And as you can probably tell, accreditation is very important to our team. We take our duty to administer a process that benefits institutions and the state very seriously. We appreciate your time learning more about community college accreditation today and we look forward to future conversations with you about how we can continue to refine and improve the process. As department staff, we are here to support you as we move forward collectively to build a process that best meets the needs of Iowans. Leading this work from the department will be myself, Heather Meissen and Robin Lilienthal. Please do not hesitate to reach out to any of us with questions or comments at any time. But for now, are there questions that we could answer for you today?
Questions?
Hey, Amy, it's Cindy Dietz. No question really, but I would just say, having served on the community college council, the amount of data that you, this division has in regards to the community colleges and how well you work with all of the institution. and how well you work with all of the institutions. I think the improvements that you've outlined specifically around, you know, student outcomes is really exciting, because you've used that data to such good results already with process and with all sorts of collaboration. So I think that's an element that you guys will really be able to excel with. So thank you.
Yeah. I agree. There's really wonderful data there. So it's time to embed that data, those data outcomes, with our accreditation process.
What is the elevator version of the difference or relationship between Standard One and Standard Seven? My own. Faculty qualification versus quality faculty plan.
Okay, so faculty qualification is just what credentials the instructor must have in order to teach a specific course? So you must have a master's degree plus now 12 credits in the disciplines of math, say, to teach math. So that's just to get you in the door as an instructor. The Quality Faculty Plan is what that instructor must then do to stay up to date in their field and to be continuously improving their teaching. So they have to do a certain amount of training per year.
So number one is a snapshot, and number seven is a the movie.
Exactly, yes. So yes, you're qualified. We need to keep you qualified.
You have to put it in terms that I can--
It's the trailer. I found this information to be very beneficial for my understanding. I really appreciate this. And like Cindy said, I also appreciate maybe moving into more of a descriptive outcome avenue. As far as, I know that everything has to be, you know, all the i's dotted and t's crossed when it comes to, you know, the things you have to do to meet code. But to move into a more of a school improvement or organization improvement process is exciting. I appreciate that.
And welcome, welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're a little bit behind schedule. We are going to break for, we're going to break now. We will reconvene after you have a chance to grab your lunch, and we'll cover the last two agenda items as we work. So it's about 10 till now. We'll reconvene about 5 after, and we'll eat lunch and talk about the last two agenda items and then move forward. So, all right. Assuming lunch is here. All right, item 10 on the agenda is board attendance, either at NASB or NACA. And let's open it up for general discussion as far as if somebody has an interest or isn't-- or knows that they don't want to go. And I've been informed by at least one person that they're not going to be going, which was sitting to my right. Still go, Namus.
I'm to his right also.
It was Brian who said that.
Is there, is anybody interested in going to either?
I'm kind of interested in going to the National Association of Charter School Authorizers Conference. It looks like a very robust agenda with a lot of very interesting sessions. But I'd like to reserve, I just need a few more days to think about that and make that commitment. So I would like to be able to contact you or the director by Monday.
That's great. Okay.
Cindy, Brian?
Not available, fortunately.
I, yeah, it's really bad for me right around then. But if I did go to one, I'd want to go to the same one she, Mary, mentioned, just because we're doing that charter.
And it's such an evolving situation.
It looked a little hands-on to me, too.
Yeah, it did.
That's why I like--
Yeah.
Is the agenda out for both of them?
Pardon?
Or is the agenda out for both of them?
Well, I would say that the NACA one is a lot more, I should say, detailed and a lot more, should I say, filled out as far as what's going to happen and who's going to be speaking. NASB one is still kind of a outline.
Oh, okay.
We didn't even know the speakers the last time we talked about.
I checked this morning and there--
I think there's one keynote speaker that's been identified. And I'm not trying to cast a stone, because I know that they sent out a request for proposals.
They do, yeah.
And that they got a robust response. So maybe it's just taken more time to choose the best ones.
I mean, I've gone to many NASB conferences. They're usually pretty good, so. I haven't, I mean, I haven't been, I guess, since the new director started, but in the past, they were always pretty good. It's nice to be other, you know, members of other state boards of education in other states. It's always nice to, you know, pick up the fun and say, what are you doing in your state about this issue? So always a good idea. I just can't come--
The other board member we have missing today is Cass. And I will, I will check with her. But Mary, if you go to the NACA, then I may go to the NASB, you know, just for a balance. But Monday, we will, is it?
Sounds great.
Sounds good enough? All right, so we'll communicate.
NASB usually has one in March, too, a legislative one.
Is that more federal legislation or?
DC, I think.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay. So Monday, we'll find out if Mary wants to go to NACA. And then I'll make a decision based on Mary's decision.
Okay.
Because I'm flexible, I really am. I could, I could go to either one.
I think it'd be nice to have someone at both of them.
That's the person who can't go to either.
He's okay.
But she's been before.
Yes.
All right, board reports. May I have anything for the good of the cause today?
I did visit with the President of Grantwood AEA Association Board and talking about the changes that have taken place since the state has changed the funding for or the opportunities for AEA's across the state. And I think they took probably a bigger hit as far as losing folks through attrition or through transfer or just making other changes, maybe about 12 or 13%. And they're still trying to work out how that's going to look for serving students. But he didn't seem to be overly-- I think he was going to just pause and see how things transpired and make sure students were served, as well as, as is intended by the state directive. So I'll just continue to check in with him. He's also President of College Community School District Board.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for board reports?
Not.
I checked in with our local superintendent about the AEA. And he said it really hasn't impacted them, because we have a speech pathologist on duty. So he said his, he goes, it really hasn't been impacting him yet. He said he disenvisioned that it may become harder for AEA's to recruit and retain people if, when there's uncertainty, you know, once, I think, once the dust has settled and people see that, hey, I can go to an AEA and have a career, then may, that may change the landscape of things.
You know, I did want to ask, we're members of NASB, is that correct?
Right.
So I can sign up for any of the webinars that are--
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I did ask especially, a local special ed teacher who works for the AEA. And I said, well, how are things going? And she goes, well, she goes, I used to work in my hometown. Now I have to drive a little bit farther to work. And, and she goes, you know, I'll get used to it. But again, anytime there's a major overhaul, there's always anxiety, and there's always apprehension about what can work and what can't work. And I think we'll have a better handle on it, you know, as the months roll on and as the dust begins to settle.
Next year or so, once everyone kind of makes it through school year, all the change and everything.
Right. Anything else as far as board reports? All right. We are adjourned.